Well, good afternoon, everybody. It's Tuesday, July 5th, 2016 at 6:01 PM and we're here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Council Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Bryce Vaniver with the Bible Baptist Church to lead us our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. All rise, please. Go ahead, Chris filling for us.
Father, we just come to you tonight thanking you for a great community, a great weekend, safe weekend in our community that we got to enjoy, our nation's birthday. Just thank you so much for allowing this group to come together tonight and preside over the business of this city, and I pray that you give them wisdom as they make their decisions. I pray you give them a clear mindset and just bless the thoughts that come about. I pray for a positive attitude among those in the crowd, and we thank you for our police department that's going to be recognized and our finance department that's going to be recognized, and thank you for their service to our community, and just watch over and protect us all in Jesus' name.
Amen. Hoping the flag of the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one and eighteen, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Well, I hope everyone had a great Fourth of July. I know we had a lot of activities going on in Granbury, and it was a great parade and a great weekend for a Fourth of July, so I thank everybody that participated and I hope everybody had a great time there. Our first thing on the agenda is some presentations. This first presentation will be a presentation given by Chief Police of Cleburne, I think, Rod Severance, is that right? And this is going to be a Texas Police Chiefs Association to present a recognition award for the Granbury Police Department for the becoming and recognized by the Law Enforcement Agency of the TPCA Best Practice Program. E.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, and Citizens of Granbury, good evening. My name is Rob Severance. I am the Chief of Police in Cleburne, Texas, and an active member of the Texas Police Chiefs Association. I am honored this evening to be representing the Texas Police Chiefs Association Recognition Program. The TPCA is an association made up of over 1,100 professional law enforcement executives throughout the state who are dedicated to improving the delivery of police services. I am here this evening to present the Granbury Police Department a certificate of recognition for achieving compliance with the Texas law enforcement's best business practices. Several years ago, the Texas Police Chiefs Association developed an accreditation program for Texas law enforcement. Many of you are already aware of accreditation programs for schools, universities, and hospitals. These are programs of professional excellence that require independent proof of compliance with a set of rigorous standards. The Texas Best Practices Program is an accreditation program that has 166 challenging standards for Texas law enforcement. These standards address the full range of law enforcement operations such as use of force, protection of citizen rights, vehicle pursuits, officer training, arrest, search, and seizure, patrol and investigative operations, and property and evidence management, just to name a few. This program has become the new gold standard for professional law enforcement in Texas, and agencies across the state are working diligently to meet these requirements. This is a voluntary program. No one forced the department to participate. Approximately one year ago, Chief Galvin and the Granbury Police Department began the process of proving its compliance with these difficult standards, and they had to prove their compliance to well-trained independent assessors. It was not easy to comply. The agency had to do a complete audit of its policies, procedures, training, and operations in order to meet these standards. The process culminated in January of this year when two trained assessors, police chiefs from other parts of the state, made an onsite inspection of the department. These assessors interviewed staff, inspected facilities and operations, rode with field officers, and they ensured compliance with all standards. Their report was sent to the recognition committee comprised of nine serving police chiefs from around the state who reviewed the report and voted to award recognized status to the Granbury Police Department. That vote was unanimous. During this process, the Granbury Police Department has proven that it meets or exceeds all standards. There are currently over 2,400 law enforcement agencies in Texas, and only 130 agencies have achieved recognized status. This evening, we officially recognize the Granbury Police Department as the 129th recognized agency in the state of Texas. What does this mean to you? The recognition program assures this council and the citizens of Granbury that your police department is operating in a manner that reflects the current best practices of Texas law enforcement. It means that your police department is one of the very best in this state. This certificate we present tonight is a symbol of professional excellence. However, the real value of the program is the process they went through to attain it, and this is not the end of the process. The program assists the department in maintaining compliance with the standards. The department will submit annual reports and analysis to assure continued compliance, and then in four years, we will be back for another onsite inspection to ensure the agency is continuing to comply with the standards. Your police department has proven to trained and independent assessors that they are one of the very best in our state. You should be very proud of their accomplishment. Chief, will you please come forward?
Tony, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'll wait Chris to get back. Mayor, Council, and Mr. Manager, let me say that this has been a longtime goal of mine, and it was a goal that could not have been met without the buy-in from these fine young men and women that are standing here before you. They are the heart and soul of this award, and it totally reflects their professionalism that they carry out each and every day. So, the true winners of this award and the ones that really need to be recognized are the ones that are standing here before you. So, hop on. Now, this process was a long and tedious one, and it required a lot of work. Was placed on one individual that was chosen to be the program manager of the recognition program, and he was the one that was tasked with making sure all our policies were in line and correctly identified and that everything was in place. He was responsible for electronically submitting all our information to the head office for compliance and review and tweaking the things that needed to be tweaked, and he stayed on top of this the whole time, and it could not have been done in any better way than the way that he did it. In fact, the assessors said that they had never seen anything so well put together before, and it speaks highly of this young man. So, tonight, I want to first recognize him for the job that he did by awarding him the chief's coin for his recognition for his outstanding job he did. Now, I have one more presentation, then I'll get out of your hair. Back on April 26th, 2016, a little after midnight, we had some officers that were enjoying a nice little break at a convenience store here in town. Had some conversation with a gentleman that walked in and who had purchased a couple of hot dogs and walked back out to his truck to finish filling it up. When they noticed him running back to the store, his behavior was kind of bizarre. They didn't know what really was going on, and he couldn't speak, and this particular officer noticed pretty quick, right away, that he was choking, and because of his quick actions and recognizing it as quick as he did and performing the Heimlich maneuver, he was able to clear this gentleman's throat, saving his life. So, tonight, I want to award Officer Colin Walker the Life Saving Award of the Granbury Police Department. So, Colin, please. Thank you very much, Council, and Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Chief. These are awards that are well-deserved, and I always love to have these kind of awards come across the Granbury, especially for our police officers and those folks there that serve the community. So, thank you very much for what you guys do. We do have one more award, and I'm going to go ahead and present this award to the financial department here. Ava, you want to come up here? Do you have a team up there with you? Sure do. This award is a Transparency Stars Award. It's the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts Awards. It's given to the city of Granbury for the traditional finances stars. It states on the award "for extremely efforts in creating financial transparency around public services and spending decisions." The Transparency Stars Program recognizes local governments across Texas that are striving to meet a higher standard for financial transparency online. These efforts provide citizens with clear, consistent information about public spending in their user-friendly formats. The Transparency Stars Traditional Finance Awards, and we're going to award it to our finance department. And I agree. day tomorrow. We're going into budget, so they're all going to go home and get a lot of rest. Promise you.
Still working.
Yeah. I'd also like to recognize our council member, our Mayor Pro Tem, Mickey Parsons, here recently received the Bill Pipstick Award from the North Central Texas Council of Government. For you folks that don't know what that is, it's actually a recognition of a person that goes kind of on the outside duties and kind of relates himself or ties himself in with not only the city he's in, but other communities and other areas around the state of Texas. And Mr. Parsons has done a good job with doing a lot of those things, and one of the big achievements or one of the big issues that kind of helped him in receiving this award was the thing he's trying to do with trying to bring in the additional road, the Comanche, was it Comanche Peak or Comanche Trail? I think. Off of that Chisholm Trail that's come in, and so he's working real hard at that. So, they recognize that, but they also recognize his involvement in other things throughout the state. And so, we want to thank our Mayor Pro Tem, Mickey Parsons, and congratulate him on getting that award and recognizing him, and also a good recognition of the city of Granbury. So, thank you, Mr. Parsons. At this time, we would normally go into the citizens' participation. Carla, do we have any tonight? I don't believe we have any. That's normal where we allow the citizens to participate in what Tom Baker calls an open mic, but we're not going to have any tonight. So, we'll move on to the next, we'll move on to the next item, and that being the consent We have two items, Council, tonight on the consent agenda. The first one being to consider approving council meeting minutes of June 21st, 2016, a regular meeting, and also there's a consider approving the North Central Texas Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement with the North Central Texas Participating Local Government. And you've had an opportunity to read through both of these items. Are there any items here that you'd like to pull off or discuss at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Mayor.
I've got a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Is there any more discussion on these two items, Council? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. We will now move into the deliberation agenda, the first item being to consider all matters incident and related to the insurance and the sale of the city of Granbury, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2016, including the adoption of ordinance 16-26 authorizing the assurance of such bonds, establishing the perimeters for the sale and insurance of such bonds, and delegating certain matters to an authorized official of the city. I'm going to call upon Ava Gregg to start this out, if you would, please, Ava.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. We would like to bring this opportunity forward to you, the opportunity to refund some of our bonds. This would be the 2016 refunding bond that would allow us to refund the 2007 certificate obligation, the 2008 and 2011 general obligation. All three bonds are callable at this time. That means that we are able to refund them, and because of the favorable market rates, this opportunity was brought forward to us by our financial advisor, John Martin and Joey Durker. He's here as well from Hilltop Securities. These bonds are callable, and at the current market rate, we are looking at refunding them at around 2.2 percent. That would allow the city to save $500,000 over the maturity of these bonds, and we have been through two bond rating calls last week, as well as a compliance call to prepare for this refunding, and the actual sale will take place on Thursday. At this time, I will let Joey Durker comment or answer any questions you might have about the sale, the upcoming sale.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. As Ava said, I presented a little presentation to each of you. It's got information regarding the Series 2016 General Obligation Refunding Bonds that we're looking to go to market to sell on Thursday. And really, she said pretty much all of the basic information. The 2007, '08, and 2011 bonds are outstanding and callable, about $6.2 million worth. Those bonds currently have a combined average interest rate of about 4.32 percent, and as Ava indicated, current market conditions project around 2.2 percent. So, almost cutting that in half, which will net the city about half a million dollars in savings. Proposing this as a parameter sale whereby tonight, you will approve the parameters at the bottom of this outline page, and then Thursday, the underwriter will go out to market. So, the sale will only go forward if the four parameters are met, and those are that the true interest cost shall not exceed 2.75 percent, the aggregate principal amount shall not exceed $6.4 million, so we're not going to add any more debt. The refunding must produce net present value savings of at least 6 percent, and we're currently looking at about 7.5. And then the final maturity will be no later than August 15, 2032, when the existing bonds were going to mature, so we're not going to extend them any further. Behind tab B, this sideways page, it's very small. I apologize for the tiny little print, but you can follow along there, the existing payments, the amount that's going to be refunded out, and then the new 2016 bonds. Then over on the far right-hand side, the savings column. It's a little bit water sewer savings, mostly tax savings. About $47,000 a year out through '24, and then a little less for the remainder for about $525,000 total savings.
Excuse me, are you in C now?
Yeah.
C.
B. Sorry.
Come ahead. The little, yeah, one I can't see.
Does anybody have any questions on this sideways page?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
So, what we're not considering is the cost of the refunding. So, what are the additional fees? You've talked about the savings, but what are the fees associated with this sale?
I don't have a cost of issuance in here, but when we talk about savings, these numbers, the savings is net to the city.
I wanted to add that in your packet that we sent out, it had summary costs associated agenda items. So, one of the pages, we had a preliminary schedule, the same as you're looking at right now, but these are more updated, and it also included the cost. And as Joey said, the savings are net of the cost, issuance cost.
Thank you.
Moving on, behind tab C is the Bond Buyers Index. This is just a quick snapshot of what the bond market looks like. This is sort of like the Dow Jones Industrial Average for municipal bonds. It's a basket of 20 A-rated bonds with an average maturity of 20 years. So, on the far right-hand column in 2016, you can see that the index is at 3.18, which is the lowest on this whole sheet for the last 15 years. It's actually the lowest in about 50 years. So, it's a great time to be borrowing money. I told you that last time when we were here with the, when we got the 0.93 percent interest rate on the Water Development Board deal, and here we're looking at about 2.2. So, really good time to be borrowing money or refinancing debt. Behind tab D is calendar, just see sort of where we are and where we're going. Here on July 5th, we've got this meeting. Like I said, on July 7th, Thursday, the underwriter will go out to sell the bonds. So, by about noon, we'll have it all sewed up, and we'll know exactly what our rate is, and we'll get with Ava and Chris. They'll be able to sign off, and then we'll close here in about a month, August 4th. And then behind tab E, not to put words in anybody's mouth, is a suggested form of motion. Are there any other questions I can answer?
I will add, Council, that our rating come in correct if I'm wrong today at AA.
Yes, Fitch ratings from the AA. We have not yet heard from S&amp;P. We should hear in the morning.
Okay.
Mayor, I got a couple.
Councilman Allen with a couple questions.
Only two. First of all, I hate to vote on something just hand to us to spend this kind of money, even when it looks like we're saving money, but I'm like Mr. Mobley, what's it going to cost us overall? And this is a 20-year bond. Wouldn't we have some of these paid off before that, even at a higher rate of interest?
No. The existing bonds go out to 32.
Everything that we got bonded is 20 years still left?
Well, these three issues, the '07s, the '08s, and the '11s go out that far.
Okay. Last time we had bonds, and I won't say it to you, but somebody said it's the best time to borrow money, but it's came down since that time we borrowed our sold bonds.
Yes, sir.
Where does it show in here what are we going to do with this money? I know, are we just going to pay off bonds?
Yes, these are strictly refunding bonds for debt service savings. You're not spending any more money.
Okay.
You're basically refinancing this debt at a lower.
Are we making it longer term than what we got now?
No, sir. It's the same term.
What is the term?
It'll run out to August 15, 2032.
It'll be set again?
The final maturity is August 15th, 2032.
Okay. And we got right now what we owe for is the same term?
Yes, for these, for these bonds that were refunded.
Okay. And you said we'd save, I forget what that figure was, you said a year, $44,000?
Yeah, on the sideways page, it's over on the far right.
Okay. Now, that doesn't include your field, does it?
Yes, all of these savings are net to the city.
Okay, it includes everything.
Includes everything.
Councilman Allen, and if I may add, we are decreasing our cost of debt from 4.3 percent to 2.1. So, that is the savings that you will see. So, our cost of debt is going down that much. So, that's the reason this opportunity is a great refunding opportunity, and it's only presented to us because of the market conditions. And these bonds are not refundable anytime. You have to follow them and watch them when they are callable, and that's when we start watching the bonds, and if there is enough savings, then we bring forward this opportunity to you.
I understand, but I know in the last five years, we've done some refinancing or sold or, or sold bonds. And we took a term that some of them was seven and 10 years. I'm just guessing at that number. I'm not for sure. It wound up being a 15-year note, and we, but we used other money for roads and other things. But we extended the, our debt is what we did. I just want to make sure that's not what we're doing now. It doesn't sound like it.
No, we cannot do that. Once we issue a bond, you, um, you commit to a length of the bond, and even if you refund it, you cannot, uh, call it too early. You have to go out and, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, whatever maturity that bond is, that's where you stay.
Okay. Counsel, any more questions for Ava or Joey?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm always in favor of saving money on these refinancing opportunities. So, I move to adopt the ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of the City of Granbury General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2016, 2016, subject to the parameters established therein.
A second.
We have a motion by Councilman Parsons and a second by Councilman Mobley. Counselors, any more discussion on this item? If not, Councilman Parsons, how you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment. I want to, uh, thank our bond underwriters for staying on top of these and helping us and Ava be aware of these issues. And I think we've done three or four refinancings over the last few years of interest rates have moved downward. So, uh, we've saved quite a few dollars over the last four, five years in the refinancing. So, appreciate y'all's hard work on that and saving the city money. Thank you.
At $500,000 a pop, at some time, at some point, it becomes real money, right?
Yeah. Uh-huh. Yeah, a few hundred thousand here and a few hundred thousand. My guess is we're over a million in savings in the last five to six years with interest rate coming down. Huh?
Yeah.
Good job. Good, good job. And that's, I guess that's why you get the Financial Transparency Award, all.
Yeah.
Really. So, that is approved. Thank you very much. Our next item is a public hearing and consider approving a request of Josiah Ventures LTD to, number one, execute a facilities improvement agreement for the infrastructure proposed within the subdivision. Estimated cost of those improvements total 679,846.50 for water, wastewater, storm drainage, and private street improvements. And also, HFL Final Platte, a, at 13.332 acre tract of the Martin-Sizer survey, ad fact number 502, has lots 2 through 28, block 1, and lots 29 through 45, block 3, of the Josiah State Edition Phase 2. The property is located east of Waters Edge Drive and north of Josiah Way. I'm going to call upon the staff, Scott Sobcheck, to talk a little bit more about that, please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have is an application request from the developer, uh, Mr. Carl Greer with Josiah Development, who is proposing to finish the second phase of this particular development. You could see the area that's un, that doesn't have the platted boundary lot lines in it and the incorporated streets just to the north where it says subject property. That's the second phase. The, uh, the, uh, planned development is a PDR 8.4, which is a single-family residential minimum lot size, 8,400 square feet. In setting up the PD, uh, there are two variance requests. One was to minimize the rear lot line, rear build line from 30 to 20. And secondly, to minimize or aggregate the side setbacks from a combined 15, minimum one side, five to five foot each side. Yeah, two five-foot set, side setbacks and a two-foot rear line. Outside of that, everything within the confines of our 8.4 remains intact. The, uh, the Final Platte application is consistent with what we've seen in the Final Platte that, uh, council has already adopted and approved. The geometric configuration of the streets and the lot layout of the 44 lots shown here on, and you're attached, Final Platte for Phase 2 is exactly the same. We vetted the application through DRC, and they addressed all comments. There are no variances with this particular application. Uh, city staff and your planning and zoning commission recommend approval of the facilities improvement agreement, allowing the city to accept the two-party contract for the infrastructure, accept the surety, and accept the Final Platte application as presented by the applicant. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I open up the public hearing. Is anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Item number four. Uh, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any question or concerns for Scott on this item?
I've got one for Scott on electrical.
Scott? Councilman Allen?
I thought that was United.
Uh, it's, uh, the City of Granbury.
Really? That side is Granbury.
So, when you go a little further south, some of the Harbor Lakes area.
Yeah, the cross street, I mean, United.
Goes into United, correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons?
So, the, the side setbacks are going to be total of 10 feet, then five and five on each side.
Yes, sir.
So, it's just a reduction of five feet overall, which has 15 and five.
Typically, in our 8.4, we see a minimum of five on one side. So, if it's five on one side, it's 10 on the other.
10 on the other.
Seven and a half and seven and a half, for example. But in this case, we're going to have two five-foot setbacks.
And the rear setbacks moved to 20 feet?
Correct.
Okay. You're going to put not bigger-sized houses than the rest of the development in there, then?
The houses will probably be about the same size, uh, that you see in, in the standard R8.4. It's just will be a little bit smaller, very large.
Thanks.
Or is the lot smaller than, uh, what they got now?
They're still maintaining the R8.4, 8,400 square foot minimum. In fact, these are pretty, some pretty sizable lots. Um, I can't, I can't see the average lot. Carl will be know about what the average lot square footage is, about 8,700.
Hmm.
Yeah, they're, they're all over 8,400 square foot, which is a typical, uh, the smallest that we can get, and they meet our, our lot width and depth requirements. So, there's, they're somewhat more sizable than 8,400 square foot, and there's a big enough envelope to accommodate a building footprint there.
Counsel, any more questions for Scott? If not, I'll break this down twos here. We'll first entertain a motion to approve the FIA for the said improvements.
So moved.
I've got a motion from, uh, Councilman Couch, a second.
Second.
A second for Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion on that part of it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. FIA is approved. Well, next, we'll go into the Final Platte. I'll entertain a motion to approve the said Final Platte of this item.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the Final Platte by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Meyer. Any more discussion on this item, counsel? Counsel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That Final Platte is approved. Thank you, Scott. Well, next, move into item number five and six jointly here. Uh, the pub, item number five, a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 16-27 regarding a request of Timothy Artterberry to rezone Lot 5, Block B of the Southwest Parkway Industrial Park Edition from interim holding to heavy commercial. This property is addressed as 106 Pirate Drive. And also, along with that, a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 16-28 regarding a request of Timothy Artterberry for a specific use to allow the operation of an auto repair shop major on Lot 5, Block B of the Southwest Parkway Industrial Park Edition. This property is addressed as 106 Pirate Drive. Scott, can you talk to us a little bit more about this item, please?
Absolutely, Mayor, Council. What we have is a request to take the property. You can see it's delineated with a little red triangle here. Uh, it's zoned interim holding, which is the placeholder, uh, that it was designated when it was annexed around 2004. It hasn't changed since. It's been able to enjoy its grandfather non-conforming status until such time that that grandfather use has been vacated, such is the case, uh, in this particular instance. Again, you can see the aerial photography of our zoning overlay map with the building footprint on it as well. Um, and Mayor, you're right, that truck actually is parked on the property behind the building line, but contained within the property itself. So, um, it does have a little piece of land behind the building, uh, behind the storefront. The, uh, as mentioned, the property is zoned interim holding. The designation of auto repair major and is distinguished from minor, and that minor is just fluid changes and tire changes, whereas in major, you can actually pull engines and radiators and transmissions and whatnot. But as a part of the zoning ordinance requirement, which requires heavy commercial with an SUP for major heavy auto repair, you can impose certain conditions, uh, in accordance with the, uh, some reasonable standards that are applied in processing the SUP. Uh, one of which, in looking at the SUP requirement, is for the supplemental standards, is basically everything still has to be inside. So, we don't want to turn this into a wrecking yard or salvage yard if they're actually doing some more major type of work. And that's why the supplemental standards are contained within the ordinance, to make sure it doesn't migrate to that point. So, heavy commercial allows for the consideration of the SUP. The supplemental standards contained within the SUP are automatically applied. We'll go through them real quickly. It says no outdoor lighting can be, uh, reflected to residential adjoining uses, shall not be used for storage of wrecked vehicles or dismantling of vehicles, or the storage of vehicle parts. Parks, we don't want it to migrate to a wrecking yard, and all vehicles being stored for repair shall be screened from the public right of way. And looking at the aerial photography, there is no screening compound. So, what that means at this point in time is that all the, all the vehicles that are queued up for repair need to be inside the bays until such time a compound can be either provided by the applicant or, or, uh, well, that's the only case. Either a compound or they're stored inside, uh, and the applicant's aware of that. So, given that dynamic, uh, which was discussed at your planning and zoning commission, the P&amp;Z recommended unanimously approval of the rezoning request to heavy commercial and approval of the SUP with following conditions, that the SUP will, shall automate, automatically expire after one year from the city council approval date. That's to properly look at performance, to see how it's going, uh, and have it available for consideration of, of re-upping if, uh, the performance is deemed agreeable. B, shall not be used for the storage of wrecked vehicles or the dismantling of vehicles, and that all vehicles, uh, shall be screened from the public right of way. Again, given the, uh, gentleman, the option that's contained within supplemental standards to screen it, of course, he can't use available parking. So, that'll have to be something that'll be vetted out with city staff if he chose, chooses to actually install a screening compound. Or, right now, as it sits for property, those vehicles need to be screened inside during off-business hours. So, again, Mayor, uh, your, uh, P&amp;Z recommends approval of the rezoning and approval of the SUP, where three conditions as mentioned.
Thank you, Scott. I'll now open up the public hearing on this item. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Now, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, Scott, I got one question. When you talk about the parking, and I know that's a multi, you know, strip there, and there are another building or another business that's tied in to that same parking lot, you might say? So, there is enough ample parking for, if, even if they didn't have, um, vehicles waiting to be worked on outside?
So, given the fact that they need to be inside, inside the bays, and there's just a small office, and then there's the work area for the automotive repair, uh, it's, it shouldn't be in addition to the parking requirements. But when the CO comes through, we'll make sure that the parking is compliant with the zoning.
I mean, my concern with something like that, I mean, we, it, somebody pulls up there and they say, well, yeah, as soon as we get done with this one, or maybe a half a day, you, you, we're going to have you, you know, park your car out there in the, in the front there for a while or whatever. So, and what you're saying is that, that could be accumulation of how many cars or vehicles or whatever out there, so. Counsel, is there any more questions about this, uh, item to Scott? Thank you, Scott. We'll start with item number five, then, counsel, or entertain a motion to, uh, entertain a motion to approve the, the, uh, the rezoning from heavy commercial, or to heavy commercial of?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch and a second by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion on that item, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That one is approved. Our next item, number six. Is there any more discussion on that one, that item, counsel? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said SUP with the specific, with the, uh, recommendations of the, A, shall automatically expire in one year, B, shall not be used for the storage of wrecked vehicles or dismantling of vehicles from storage vehicle parts, and also, C, all vehicles being stored for repair shall be screened from all public right of ways and shall be located inside the building of, of off-hours.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second for Councilperson Meyer. Any more discussion on that item, counsel?
I've got one, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
Number C.
Pardon?
Number C. What happens if they're working on it and they got the door open?
This wouldn't apply for, uh, business hours. It would be off-business hours. So, they would just bring the vehicle, um, inside the bays and close the roll-up doors.
I see it says off-hours, but, you know, if they're working at, say they close at 5:00, and the mechanic stays there till 9:00 and works, get one out, and he's got the door open, that's not going to bother him?
That's, it's, yeah, it's.
If it becomes that, with the way I'm reading, if it becomes that nuisance or it becomes that, then they're going to be required to put some type of screening.
Okay.
Right? Is that right, Scott?
It's just, to me, it's just like any operation of automotive repair, even minor auto, automotive repair, where they do tire and batteries, for example, did here. They have the roll-up door open and it's visible from the street scape. And that's minor in light commercials. So, that's applied the same way. It's just.
I'd rather see somebody in there than close the. Thank you.
More discussion on that, counsel? Let's see, I had a second on that, right? First and second?
Meyer.
No more discussion? Uh, all in favor of, uh, that SUP, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That SUP is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 16-29 regarding a request of Ryan Haydon for a specific use permit to allow the operation of a motorcycle sale and service used in the, used in the heavy commercial zoning district. This property is addressed as 2608 East Highway 377. Scott, can you give us some more information on that one, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We've seen this property previously. It's currently zoned heavy commercial. This was the location of the, I believe it was Big Dog Golf Carts, uh, and they had a previous site plan that the current applicant has actually used as their site plan to support, uh, their use. We have roughly 600 square foot of front display area during business hours. We have the required six spaces required for the office and the area to the back of the building for working on the motorcycles in this case. Um, the, uh, the area is zoned heavy commercial. You can see the area delineated and teal, and again, just like the golf carts, an SUP is required in heavy commercial in order to allow for the open display of motorcycles, new and used. Uh, we are applying, our staff and P&amp;Z, uh, proposing the same conditions that we saw on the last applicant, Golf Carts, that the SUP is good for one year from the date of council approval, just to make sure, again, based on performance, that it doesn't migrate into something, uh, that, uh, is, is somewhat unwieldy from a site standpoint. Motorcycle shall be displayed as delineated on the attached site plan. That was that blue box area along the street front. Uh, outside repairs prohibited. The merchandise shall be situated in a manner not to block ingress, egress to the building or required spaces. And outside display will only be allowed during standard business hours. And, uh, one of my staff planners conferred with them that the standard business hours they were using or proposing was 7 to 7, so we apply that to the SUP as well. So, your planning and zoning commission report to counsel is approval of the SUP unanimously with the three conditions as itemized, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I open up the public hearing on this item. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Number seven. Now, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, are there any questions for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the S, the said SUP with the, with the provisions, uh, number one being the. Number one being the Pacific use permit shall expire one year from city council approval. Number two, the motorcycle shall be displays as delineated on the attached site plan. Outdoor repair is prohibited. And number three, the outside display will be allowed during standard business hours, seven to seven P M.
So moved.
I have a, I have a motion by Councilman Parsons and a second by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That S U P is approved. Our next one is the item number eight is a public hearing and consider approving a request of Shane Timm to replat lots 18 to 20, block one of the Sky Harbor Edition, section one as lot 18R, block one of the Sky Harbor Edition, section one. That property is located at the intersection of Scorpio Drive and Apollo Court. Scott, can you tell us a little bit more about that one, please?
Mayor, counsel, you can see the rough location of Sky Harbor. It's located to the north of our city, north of the lake, just to the east of Weatherford Highway as you pass the bridge. What we have is a platted subdivision that already has three lots of record proposed and the applicant is wishing to go from three lots to one lot, so we're decreasing the density. We're decreasing the impact on the infrastructure. We have county standard streets. It's contained within Sky Harbor Water Supply Corporation as a utility district which supplies water. We have a four-inch line in the subdivision that does not meet our typical minimum eight-inch line standards. But again, a key element in looking at this variance request, we have a litany of variances here, is we're actually decreasing the number of demand units from three down to one, which helps in the subs-standard system as we see it. As a part of the replat application, you can see the two lot lines in the middle being deleted. We have the applicant go out through the franchise utilities to make sure they do not have any franchise utilities, i.e. charter cable or the telecom lines or gas lines in those utility easements and they sign off on it before we vacate and abandon those easements. And that's been done as well. So your P and Z and city staff recommends approval of the variances that are tied to this as well as the replat application. When we get over to the variances, we have a long list. We have a variance to 39 and 46 to not install eight-inch minimum water line or hydrants in this area. Again, we have a four-inch line that's in a utility district. It's not in the city of Granberry C C N. We have a variance to 39 and 45 to not install a sewer main, gravity flow main. This is being sustained by septic systems in this particular development. A variance to 31 to not construct the streets to city standard urban gutter sections. We have county standard streets with guard edges. And a variance to 48 to not install streetlights. Again, this is, there's no electric lights in this area for neighborhood lighting. Yours memorandum from the city engineer is on the screen before you in a part of your agenda packet. Again, the key element here is we're actually decreasing the number of units demand on the infrastructure of the engineers supporting that. This was provided to P and Z and P and Z recommends approval of the itemized variances with the replat application as presented by the applicant. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item, number eight? Now I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns for Scott on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons.
As far as HOA items, we are not involved in any determination as to whether or not this is an approved use out there.
That's correct.
And so that'll be between him and the homeowners association. When they combine lots like this, does that change the status of the lot for the septic system spacing under Hood County rules or do you know?
We, we bring Hood County to the D R C table and typically what we found, and Hood County had no comment on this, but typically what we find when they're actually decreasing the demand and increasing the lot size from what they're vested under, they're more happy with it because they can get a higher gross acreage threshold than what they're vested in.
Than what they had originally.
Correct.
Thanks.
Counsel, any more questions for Scott or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the variance with the said, with said variances on that. Variance number 1.9E, public improvement policy, variance 3.9 and 4.6 regarding centralized water mains, variance 3.9 and 4.5 regarding the centralized wastewater mains, and variance 3.1 regarding streets do not improve adjacent streets to the urban standard street, and variance 4.8 regarding the installation of streetlights.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilperson Myers.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion on this item or the variances? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is approved. Our next item is item number nine, a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 16-30 regarding a request of David Southern to rezone lot six, block 100R of the Barton Edition from light commercial to interim holding. This property is addressed at 805 LeFane Highway. I have had a request from the applicant to remove this or table this item for him to do some more research or work on this. So at this time, counsel, I would entertain a motion to table this item until August 16th, 2016, at six o'clock right here at City Hall.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons and a second by Councilman Couch. Any, any more discussion on this item, counsel? All in favor of tableing this item, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That will be tabled at the set date. Our next item is item number 10, a public hearing and consider approving a request of David Campbell to final plat a 4.995 acre tract of the Martin Seiser survey abstract number 502 as lots one and two, block one of the David Campbell Edition. Once again, the property is located east of Liberty Road on East Highway 377. Scott, would you give us some more information on this one, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. Counsel, what we have is a single tract that's currently in survey that's proposed to be final platted as two lots. The applicant, Mr. Campbell, has a, an option for somebody to purchase the two acres just to the west side adjoining the light commercial zone. You can see the aerial photography of the site. Again, this is roughly 4.99 acres. We saw this as a preliminary plat application request probably about five or six months ago and there were, there were a number of variances tied to this, two of which we didn't act on immediately as a part of the preliminary plat. The ones that we did act on were 31E cannot improve 377 to an urban standard facility and 364A to not install sidewalks along the street frontage. No sidewalks will be installed at that time, just not tied to the filing of the plat at courthouse for record. And then we had a variance to 48 to not install streetlights along 377 although there will be an illumination point at the access on two 377. The two that were, that were deferred until the final plat was regarding water and sewer. There is water and sewer to this property, but it runs along the south edge of the property line. You can see on this drawing, there's a dotted line in easement and both water and sewer run through Mr. Campbell's property to the south can take us to lots one and two. So what we had to do was procure an easement because if development occurs on lot one or two, we need to make sure that, that there's a right of access to tie onto a public main for water and sewer and that's in place. It wasn't in place at the time of the final plat and that's why city staff asked that we defer these motions on the variances at that time. So we have two variances that, that are associated with this plat for lots one and two. They're relative to not install a minimum eight-inch water line or sewer line along 377, which is our subdivision ordinance standard. They do have water and sewer in the back. We just didn't have, we didn't have a mechanism in place to allow for private property to access those public mains without the easement placed. We do have the original document in our file and if any event council votes to accept this plat as proposed, we will go file that separate instrument and plat at the same time and report the instrument number on the plat that way it speaks to each other and we're good to go. So all this was explained to P and Z and your planning and zoning commission report is unanimously to approve the variances two, 39 and 45 and 39 and 46 and approve the replat application as presented by the applicant. Mayor, that's it. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open you up, open it up to the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to talk on this item? Item number 10. Now I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns for Scott on this item? Scott, I've got one question here and I don't know if it really matter there at this time, but isn't there some drainage problems in that area right now? Where it's holding water?
I'm not aware of any drainage issues, but I can tell you since this property is zoned interim holding, what we may see is a site plan at the time that somebody is proposing a building on a parking lot and certainly city staff when they see a site plan, they have the latitude to tap the shoulder of our city engineer and have them look at stormwater management issues.
Exactly, because they couldn't afford any more water coming down that way towards 377 where I know we have an issue down there collecting water across 377. All right, counsel, any more questions or concerns with Scott on this item?
Yes.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this final plat with the said variances, section 3.9 and 4.6 not provide water along the street frontage and also section 3.9 and section 4.5 to not provide wastewater along the street frontage.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Counsel, any more discussion on this item, number 10? If not, counsel, how do you vote? I entertain a motion for all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That item is approved. Our next item is item number 11, which is a public hearing and consider approving a request of Grand Country LLC to replat a 1.561 acre tract as common area, one, block two of the Avalon Edition. The purpose of the replat is to incorporate the previously unplatted five-feet portion of an existing tract into the Avalon Edition to allow for an HOA area, egress and ingress and egress, and maintenance of the adjoining property. This property is located on Hill Boulevard, east of Avalon Circle. Scott, if you could, give us some more information on that one, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. This is a piece of property that we saw that was discussed with the property just to the east and it was availed that there was a dispute between the adjoining property owners or, well, I won't say dispute, but some discussion where we had a difference of opinion relative to the property located to the east and the subject Stonegate property in which there was a five-foot strip of land. What had happened was the property owner beat it over to the title company, the five-foot strip, over to the Stonegate property as a HOA, potential HOA area, but they couldn't roll it into their property because it was a, it was a platted piece of property. In order to do that appropriately and consistent with our subdivision ordinance regulations, they actually had to replat and bring in the five-foot strip as a, as a five-foot HOA area or common area. So that's what's being proposed on this particular application. Again, you can see the replat application before you. It affects roughly 13 lots from Hill Boulevard northward to the lake. It doesn't affect the entire Stonegate Edition, platted Edition. So as a part of this application, the applicant's consultant advisor, Mr. Advisor, Mr. John Hall, was due enough to require all 13 lot owners signature in order to bring this HOA area because it affects their 13 lots. It does allow for egress, I believe, through the wrought iron gates, through the common properties, which is something that we've talked at D R C and they certainly accommodated in their HOA instrument. And I think the, the ultimate goal here is to actually pass this through the HOA as a HOA strip and ultimately have the individual property owners own to the back fence line and do away with the HOA, the egress, the egress, to allow for emergency egress away from the homes. So this may be a two-step process. There is one variance associated with this particular application. Get through all these signatures here. We do have one variance. The Hill Boulevard is actually a substandard, by the way. It's a standard street that meets our design specifications for a roadway, but unfortunately the right of way is a 56-foot right of way. Our ordinance requires that if you have a, if your contiguous to a substandard right of way, you have to get a big, half the difference in this case, so the two-foot. The two-foot would be measured from where an existing fence line is built as a part of a planned development. So another particular nuance about variance in there is the better shot of the fence line. So it affects that southern, southeastern most property that parallels along Hill Boulevard. So I want to bring up two things. One, subdivision ordinance is pretty clear. When you review variances, it's based on the, the intensification of the development relative to the application before us. So there is no increase in demand or development demand in, in assessing or acquiring the two-foot. The other little nuance that we looked at is there is a continuation on the plat just to the, to the west of this, which is part of the Dairy Queen property. If you look over to the Bacon property, there's a right of way dedication line and that right of way dedication is 56-foot as well. So the 56-foot is basically consistent all the way through to Hill Boulevard. So we're looking at it from an equitable standpoint and the fact that there's no additional demand being placed on this replat application other than rolling in an HOA area. So you do have a letter from the city engineer recommending supporting the variance request and the replat application as presented by the applicant. But, you know, I did want to mention that even though this is getting rolled into as an HOA area, we'll probably see another series of replats taking this from the HOA to just an easement later down the line.
So right now, the HOA will be maintained or the individual homeowners will be...
I'm gonna defer to John Hall.
Well, he's, he's on there to speak, so maybe he'll speak as in the public hearing. Is that everything you got to give us right there or?
If I fall short of my mark, John, help me out, but it's my understanding that the property owners will maintain to the back fence line as they usually do, but just as a secondary backup, the HOA can go in there and maintain it if something goes wrong.
Hey, Scott, let me, can I make a recommendation? I notice a lot of time when you turn your head to, to address the counsel, you're cutting out and I know that's hard for Carla to hear that, so if you face your mic, I guess, towards the counselor or just keep it in there so we can, so you don't cut out, or I thought it was a mic problem, but I think it's when you move your head, if you would, please. Thank you. At this time, though, I'll open up the public hearing and I see we do have John Hall to speak in the public, so John?
Yes, John Hall, 3506 Fountain Way in the Acton area. I'm really just available for any questions. This, this five-foot strip from Hill Boulevard down to the lake will initially be owned subject to this replat by the homeowners association and, and we use that five-foot strip, have historically and will continue to use it as landscape maintenance entering through the gate, the existing gates in each of those lots for mowing and edging.
Is it, is it larger down towards the lake or there's no home? Is it larger down towards the lake, or there's no homes attached to it down towards the lake? Is there, I mean, isn't there an area down there where there's no homes really attached to it?
Well, it is. There's one home, and actually, there's 12 that is their backyards. Then, the 13th home is an open-body lot, you know, that faces the lake, and so it goes, this five-foot strip goes along the side of that yard, and we maintain that also, the association does. We will be coming back to you with a different application, with another replat application, but that'll be to wind up deeding these properties, including this five-foot strip in each of the 13 units.
Counsel, is there any questions for Mr. Hall? Not all close the public hearing then. Is anybody else in the public wish to speak on this matter? We'll close the public hearing. Counsel, is there any more discussion or remark to Scott or John Hall? Mr. Allen?
No, I'm just going to make a motion to approve it.
Okay, now, bear in mind, you'll need to add that variance in there, so have you got a motion?
That is a motion with a variance.
You got a motion by Councilman Allen to approve the replat with the said variance, a request of Section 3.1E and 4.1OB of the subdivision ordinance to not increase Hill Boulevard right-of-way from 56 feet to 58 feet, half of the difference of the required 60-foot right-of-way.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilman Allen and a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item?
Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
I just want to thank everyone for working together. I know it was a difficult situation. Mr. Murphy, appreciate your cooperation in this, and I'm glad it's resolved.
Amen. Any more discussion, Counselor? If not, all in favor of approving this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 11 is approved. We'll next move into number 12. Item number 12, which is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 16-31 regarding the request of Don Murphy to rezone an approximate eight-acre tract of the Marcus Smith survey, abstract number 504, from interim holding to the planned development multifamily. The property is located on Hill Boulevard, north of East Highway 377. Scott, can you give us some more information on that one, please?
Absolutely, Mayor, Counsel. Just as a sidebar comment, the applicant is Mr. Murphy. The property owner currently is still Mr. Robert Till, who owns the property. Mr. Murphy's acting on behalf of the property owner in order to actually make this development case come to the public hearing, through the public hearing process.
Thank you.
So this is a zoning map that shows generally where the area is. It's bordered in a yellow highlighted area. You can see the property is currently zoned interim holding. To the east, we have Light Commercial, which is a medical office building. To the south is Light Commercial, that's the Avalon Retail Plaza, and to the west is a planned development patio home community, Stonegate. To the west of that is multifamily. Again, this is the visual image of a perspective of the aerial photography showing the placement of the property. It's been vacant for quite some time. We have a zoning request application to propose a planned development multifamily community between the Light Commercial zoning and the PD patio home. Planned developments are, in essence, a zoning ordinance unto themselves. They stipulate development design standards, and as a part of that package, a development plan is required under the zoning ordinance. The plan has to itemize any kind of allowances or variances to the standard, in this case, Patio Home District. We do have an itemized listing of what those variances are. One of the things that was brought up at PD or at the P&amp;Z meeting is PDs are there for uniqueness in design. Sometimes we see mixed use, sometimes we see a certain allowance for waivers of parking standards, in this case of this particular PD. We have the use of grasscrete for purpose cover over the drift lines of trees, but as a part of this planned development and this PD package, they itemize these variances, and they're itemized on your development plan. We'll go through them very quickly, and then we'll go through some of the general concepts of what's being proposed by the applicant. We have a front yard setback, which is our, on the left is our standard for multifamily, on the right is what the applicant's proposing. So, front yard setback is 25 feet, and the developer's proposing 15 feet. So if we go back to the development plan, for example, you'll see the front yard along Hill Boulevard. He's got that dotted line of where Hill Boulevard is in the front build line, and you can see the placement of the southwest building, for example, that's angled in at 45 degrees, where it's touching the building setback, and then we also have a garage along the westernmost egress point. So those are the two points of where the building setback is being relaxed. The other little nuance about these PDs is it incorporates a site plan. A site plan is a snapshot of approval, so it's not like a developer can come back after this PD is amended, or if it's approved, and move those buildings up to the front build line from here, and he has to come back and do another site plan approval. So, we're capturing a snapshot of this site plan of how these buildings are being placed and what's being located insofar as detailed site design. We have a side yard setback of 15, and what's being proposed is a side yard set on the west side, 15 on the west side, and two feet on the east side. This was modified from a previous council discussion where he, the developer, actually relocated a garage away from the western property line, the PD patio home, placed the garage two feet away from the common property line where the medical office building is located, and you can see that on the site plan here. Okay? We have a rear yard setback of 30. No rear yard setbacks are being proposed because of the lake. Building separation from the main structure to the main structure, again, this is our ordinance standard, with openings up to 20 feet, 10-foot with no openings, and here he's asking for 10-foot minimum or the adopted code, whichever is more restrictive. Parking spaces, 2.5. What he's proposing is 2.2 parking spaces per unit, including assigned tandem spaces in front of the attached garage, or 2.02 per unit, not counting the tandem spaces. Those tandem spaces are something that we've touched on in a previous council meeting, I think, where he's actually parking one behind the other in a garage, kind of setting, so we're not counting one of those spaces as a usable space because it's not free-flowing Maximum height is 35 feet, but for roofs and gables, cooling towers and chimneys, 40-foot is permitted. That's our base standard. Height at building plate line is 33 feet. That would be the top plate line. Height at the ridge line is 50 foot midpoint at the gable roof, 41.5. Okay. Then our masonry standard, all buildings require 80% masonry, and the developer's asking for no masonry for carports. The developer is proposing metal. But the garages, if you can see the middle elevation of the building to the, slightly to the right, those are the garages. You can see those are all masonry. He is not asking for any masonry relaxation on the main structures as well, just the carports, not to rock clad the support columns for the carports. So even though, I can't go back to the elevation here, even though the elevation that he presented is somewhat conceptual, there is no variance request tied to this PD for masonry relaxation. He still has to meet our 80% masonry standard. It's measured to the top plate minus your doors and windows. So that's all the variances that are itemized in your development plan. A couple other nuances that we want to touch on that are a part of this PD is that he wants to, or he's proposing to, in lieu of presenting a tree conservation plan, because he's actually picking out, relocating, proposing to relocate some of these mature trees to a different area, which he can do as part of the planned development. Again, a planned development is your own zoning ordinance, you're writing and constructing your own zoning ordinance. So he presented us a tree relocation plan, showing where those tree, mature trees will be relocated, in lieu of presenting a tree conservation plan and paying into the tree fund. That's a part of the PD package as well. And there's the drawing. I know it's hard to see, but some of the larger, darker shaded trees are proposed to be rezoned. One of the things that we met, we had a great amount of discussion on when we met his staff is kind of unfamiliar of how receptive these trees were to be relocated, especially if they're oaks. You know, what, by what nature are they being pulled up, and how are they being transplanted to another area? What's the survival rate, for example? So, city staff came up and presented P&amp;Z a condition for their consideration, certainly council's consideration, that all trees shown on the tree conservation plan, it would be, in this case, it'd be part of the PD package, to show the relocation of the trees shall be done under supervision of an arborist and coordinated with the city's park superintendent. The city parks superintendent shall choose or approve the choice of the arborist, and the developer shall bear the cost associated with this condition. In essence, we want an arborist to go out there, have boots on the ground, and certify, if in the event this gets an approval, that the trees will be relocated. If they're being pulled up, they're being pulled up in a safe, healthy manner, and they're being relocated in a situation that is more conducive to their survival, long-term survival. If the arborist is out there and they decertify, say, this was damaged during the relocation process, we need to come back and process the TCP in order to get monies into the tree fund for the loss of those count ranges. So it's a way where we're having professionals on the ground, they're monitoring the tree location process, and if it's a survival rate, this group's good, and they certify it and sign off on it, and the parks department is fine with that, then certainly, when you read the tree preservation ordinance, the first caption in that tree preservation ordinance is the intent of this ordinance is to preserve mature trees, is not to transplant a bunch of three-inch caliber trees. We want to preserve trees, we want to move buildings around, we want to save the drift line, and certainly, this is a novel way to save those mature trees, whether or not an arborist, certified arborist signs off on it's another matter. So, that's why you see the condition, that's part of your agenda packet. Lastly, and one of the more major issues that we want to touch on a little bit is the consistency with the comprehensive plan. This is an area that is set aside for single-family residential. A comprehensive plan was adopted in 2008, so it's eight years old. You can see the areas delineated on the future land use map contained within the comprehensive plan on your screen. The area delineated in Peel is the subject site. You can see just to the east of that is the area where the MOB, it's earmarked for commercial, and the area to the west of that, where the patio homes is, is earmarked for single-family residential as well, which, when you read through our definitions of what single-family residential and high-density residential in our current comprehensive plan, single-family residential basically is just single-family residential detached, and that's it. It allows for R7, 8.4, R10, R12, and RE, which is residential estate, old state, one-acre lots. High-density residential allows for multifamily, patio home, townhome, duplex, and so on. So, even the PD that's located to the west, the development is inconsistent with our comprehensive plan. If you go further to the west, the retirement community that's built more like a multifamily complex is earmarked for high-density residential. So, the processing of a zoning application such as this, a PD multifamily, one of the vetting process or one of the considerations, eastern element, considering this, is consistency with the comp plan. Is it consistent with the comp plan? And in this case, it's currently not. It's, the earmark is for single-family residential, and we did have that conversation with P&amp;Z, a lack of consistency with the comp plan. So some of the choices that were made available, let me touch on the traffic study. We did, as a part of the seminal package, very briefly, the developer did retain the services of the traffic engineers, submit a traffic impact analysis to our city engineer for review. You have that memorandum from Freezing Nichols in your agenda packet. I'm not going to read anything, but there were kind of three areas that the traffic study focused on, but when you go down to the bottom, summary from Freezing Nichols, your city engineer, as we agree with the developer's study, no mitigating improvements were warranted at this time due to the relatively minor impacts of the proposed site as being presented. They did recommend that we submit the traffic study over to TechSpot, to have them look at the timing of the signal at Hill and 377 for their consideration. I talked to Freezing Nichols this morning, and they are bundling up a memorandum to TechSpot if this goes forward, to have them revisit the timing. But all the other improvements that were mentioned in there, Freezing Nichols stated that there were no physical improvements, street improvements, that were necessitated by this particular proposal individually. So, the, so we had a good, healthy discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission. It lasted about 30 to 40 minutes at least, and the options that staff presented to P&amp;Z, especially as it relates to the inconsistency of the comp plan, was one of five under the zoning ordinance allowances. So, one, you can, if the P&amp;Z and the city council wish to vote in favor of it or act in support of the application, those are options one and two. What we need to do is first amend the future land use map, within the 2008 comprehensive plan from single-family to residential, and state the reasons for the change from the adoption of the 2008 adoption. Two, direct the city manager and staff to change the area on the future land use map in the plan from single-family to high-density residential. And thirdly, act appropriately on the zoning request. The second option is just basically whether or not there's going to be any approval of the zoning request with any condition or modification that the council seems finds reasonable insofar as supporting the development. It would be a design standard. The third option, table with additional information or requested modification to the developer. The fourth option, deny with prejudice. And fifth is deny without prejudice. The difference between the two is deny with prejudice is an applicant cannot resubmit an application for a six-month period. In essence, there's a cooling period. So after, after a pretty healthy discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission, the P&amp;Z report to you is they voted four to three to deny the request without prejudice. In fact, they chose option five. So what that means is they're recommending denial without prejudice, so if council denies this, for example, the applicant could, in effect, come back the following month and resubmit for whatever P&amp;Z here. Mayor, that's my report. That's my summary. I'll be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you very much, Scott. I'm sure we'll come back with some questions to you. The council will. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, though, at this time, because we've got several folks that are wanting to talk on this item, so I'm going to call upon those folks right now. Michelle Davis will be the first one.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. Michelle Davis, 725 North Avalon Court, Granbury. First, I'd like to thank you for approving the variance in the previous agenda item because it was mine, and I certainly wasn't looking forward to putting a right-of-way two feet from my front door, so thank you for that. You know, I've advised boards of directors for 20 years, so this process is pretty familiar to me, although I will say the setting and the subject matter is new and exciting. You know, the city code is pretty clear here, that it's the applicant's burden to demonstrate that they've complied with all the standards. And I recently discovered that I don't even know who the applicant is. I looked at the one-page chains of zoning application. The name, applicant name is blank. The description of the platted property is blank, and the... The description of the platted property is blank and the property owner is identified as Robert Hill. But when I looked up the public records and when I looked at Exhibit E to the city's report, I see that the property is owned by a limited partnership, two different trusts and four different trustees. So let's start with that. The second thing is the planned development district. As Mr. Sobchak said, that's a zoning ordinance in and of itself. It's a designation in and of itself. 6.1 talks about mixed use. It involves newer innovative concepts, things that are not permitted by other zoning districts. It also has an express warning against being misused. This is a proposal for an apartment complex. That's it, plain and simple. That's a Section 5.11 and there is no mixed use. There's nothing innovative about it that would warrant zoning it under Section 6. Number three would be the non-compliance with the comprehensive plan. And as you know, that is a reason for denial. But in addition to, you know, council in the plan is expressly directed to consider the desires of the citizens here. And in that plan, it says things like preserve, protect, maintain, enhance the character of existing neighborhoods. Ninety-six percent of the folks that responded to the notice that went out opposed that request. I do want to clarify though, that the folks here are not suggesting that that property shouldn't be developed and we certainly don't think that it has to be developed by single-family homes. We get that, all right? We get that that's going to be developed and that there's something going to go there. But what we do oppose is an apartment complex under the guise of a PD that has, what, seven or eight variances because it couldn't be approved if it were under Section 5.11, including the tree issue. I also think that we're not alone here. You've got a new comprehensive plan that you're looking at and I think the city has spent a whole lot of time and money looking at this and trying to get the view of the citizens right. When I looked at that, what I saw is that that property is, looks like it's going to be zoned mid-density residential, which means townhomes, patio homes and such. There is another designation for apartment buildings and there's ample room for that in the new comprehensive plan. And I think they've put those near places that are more compatible to that use, for example, near other apartment complexes. You're also being asked to approve a whole bunch of variances and I'm going to let Mr. Kokonour deal with that so you don't have to continue to listen to me. But there's also been no effort to meet the standards for those code variances, which is something that I've now learned how you have to go about doing. So if the answer, you know, to why we don't see the code variances being met as well, this is a PD, I mean, I think that demonstrates exactly the abuse that Section 6 was worried about. Just don't think that the applicant, whomever the applicant is, can satisfy their burden here. And we would ask that the request be denied. I do thank you for your indulgence this evening.
Thank you, Michelle. Our next speaker, next business speaking will be Paul Kokonour.
Good evening. My name is Paul Kokonour. My wife and I live at 714 North Avalon Court. On June 20th, the P and Z did deny this request and there was speculation about the future use plan and the designation of single-family, basically implying that it might have been a mistake. Perhaps it was, could be true. We'd actually like to see a medium-density townhome development on this property. If council does rezone the property, the use of planned development is inappropriate because this plan is clearly not an innovative concept. It's just a high, a typical high-density apartment complex. It actually would be substandard, given the detrimental impact of all the variances. The request for a PD designation is only an attempt to circumvent a Section 2.1.Echo of the city ordinance because these variances obviously could not meet that legal standard. This proposal will violate Sections 511 Delta, 511 Charlie, 511 Foxtrot, and 11.2. Delta of our city ordinance. Code states that the building must not, excuse me, that a building must not exceed 40 feet tall, but this request is for 50 feet, only to pack in more apartments. The front setback is supposed to be 25 feet, but the, this request claims that 15 is sufficient. Code requires a side setback of 15 feet, but that's reduced to ridiculous two feet. The design provides only half of the required distance between buildings and our code mandates two and a half parking spots per apartment. This request claims that 2.02 is enough and provides no solution for where the approximately, approximate 60 additional cars would be parked. All of these variances are to resolve a self-created problem and are solely for economic benefit. These problems could easily be avoided by reducing the density. These structures are just too tall, too close to each other, and too close to property boundaries. Of course, Granbury already has buildings taller than 40 feet and we've got structures with insufficient setbacks and we've got parking lots without enough parking spaces. But we've learned from the past, and I assume that's partly why council implemented better regulations. If 50-foot tall buildings, 2.02 parking rate, 10-foot building separation and two-foot setbacks are acceptable, then instead of granting special privileges, we should just change the regulations. I earlier referenced the standards established in Section 2.1.Echo of the zoning ordinance. That regulation mandates that a variance shall not be granted to relieve a self-created hardship. It shall not be based solely on economic gain. It shall not permit special privileges and it cannot result in undue hardship in another parcel of land. Violating a single one of those four provisions would require denial. And yet, this proposal violates all four. I appreciate your careful consideration and respectfully ask that each member of city council vote to deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, while we're, while we're on this speaker's thoughts right there, wasn't there some arrangements made to get up to the 2.5 with the applicant by putting some additional parking in some of them tree areas? Was that true?
He was requesting to add, maybe yesterday, actually, a little more. It wasn't impervious cover. It didn't meet our parking standard. It was grasscrete. So when you look at, when you look at our definition of parking, approved hard surface under parking standards, it's either HMAC or concrete and we have a calculable effect in order to sustain the proposed development in this case. For example, if you, if you have a certain calculation and, for example, if you get 100 parking spaces, we allow for a certain percentage over it, but we don't allow for a ski park, for example. So if my, if my required parking is for 100, I could have 25% more so I can have 25, 125 spaces. The 100, the 100 has to be approved hard surface, concrete or HMAC. The 25 additional is more flex space that we see in developing areas in the ski pit. The barbecue place is a good example of this where they wanted to preserve the integrity of the drip line around the tree and it allows for permeable surface and cars to park on there. So it's a good use of grasscrete, but it doesn't solve all the problems. It helps, it helps provide for water for the tree, but it's not a viable parking space because a lot of times people with heels get out and it's not a good viable walking surface, for example. But we still have the 100, the required parking spaces. And in this case, back to your question, Mayor, what was being proposed by the applicant was to add more parking spaces as grasscrete. And if that was the case yesterday, then that would have a net impact on the viable compliant parking spaces, which would meet our HMAC or concrete standard, which P and Z didn't act on because he was impacting that and he would be further requesting a variance to our approved parking surface standard. So that's why we said it's probably not in your best interest because if that's the case, if that's your presentation, you're trying to relax the code more from what P and Z offered up and it needs probably be remanded back to P and Z for their consideration, especially given the light of the four to three vote because that may have a certain swing on how things, how the report's getting forward to you.
Mayor, if I asked a question?
Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you, Scott. I know in commercial, you do share parking. Can you do that on apartments or not?
The onsite parking has to sustain itself. So if there's, if there's any variation that they can't sustain the parking onsite and they need a joint parking agreement or a shared parking agreement from another adjoining property, then that needs to be vetted out and discussed with council that it's going to be used because a lot of times we need to make sure that if in the event that parking agreement dematerializes, it throws them into non-compliance and causes not only parking problems, potential parking problems, but also title problems.
Yeah, that's a question. When a gentleman was talking about the setback, that's the same thing we just did down the road there with Waters Edge. We changed the setback in the variance between the houses. That's kind of common in it.
So, yeah, so that was a single-family residential R8.4 and rather than go with the standard combined 15-foot side setbacks, council approved the variance to minimize that by five foot.
If you're a single family, then it wouldn't be a problem?
It's really a legislative decision. It's up to P and Z and city council. Our job as staff is to provide hopefully a robust application for you to make the decision, the hard decision that you need to make.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Okay. We'll continue on to the public hearing. I just want to keep some of that stuff while it was fresh in our minds so the council could hear that also. Our next speaker is Eve Beahan. Is that right, Beahan?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Eve Beahan. My husband and I live in Stonegate at 1017 West Avalon Court. Thank you for the opportunity for Stonegate residents to present our concerns regarding this rezoning request. We see no justification for the rezoning of this property to PD MF. This request does not adhere to the city's comprehensive plan nor the future land use map. Stonegate is a quiet townhome community of 37 homes. A high-density apartment rental complex next door to our community is not the way we would ever want to see this property developed. Please know, however, that our residents would fully embrace and not hesitate to see a development of townhomes next door to our community, something similar to Stonegate, not a rental apartment complex that has 128 units. A townhome development would provide harmonious use of this property and could also eliminate many variance requests, not to mention eliminate the need to relocate so many trees, which would probably die within the first year. We want to promote the utilization of land in a manner to assure the best possible community environment in accordance with the master plan and comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city of Granbury. Page five of your staff report this evening points out that only two responses in favor of this project were received from the public notices and that 25 responses were not in favor. Property owners are speaking out to make their voices heard. You can see that we have many homeowner concerns. The proposed plan is not harmonious with the area and does not fit within the letter or spirit of Section 6 of the voting, zoning ordinance. As proposed, this project brings traffic congestion, a decline in Stonegate property values, increased crime trespassing and general mischief possibly to the neighborhood, likely increase in our homeowner insurance rate, excessive building height, and many other variance requests under the guise of a planned development as outlined by Paul Kokonour, and lack of sufficient parking. This applicant developed Stonegate. We have really no guest parking, so we have a parking issue. This applicant took care of the reserve and did that development. They have a parking issue. If this is allowed to go forward, the apartment, proposed complex next door of apartments will have a parking issue as well. The applicant has not proven that the proposed multifamily rezoning and development entitlement for apartments are in the best interest of the city or that use is not damaging other owners. This project violates zoning ordinances, is incompatible with the comprehensive plan, which gives preference for owner-occupied dwellings, and, as stated, does not adhere to the future land use plan. Again, we ask that you consider our many concerns and that you deny with prejudice this request to rezone this property to PD MF. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Eve. Our next public speaker is Lee Walker.
Mayor, council, hope you're all doing well tonight. I am Lee Walker. I am the sales and marketing consultant for Avalon Property Company for the last 18 years. So I had the pleasure of selling several of the owners their townhomes. As the buyers and the property owner association are aware, there was a significant difference between sales price for Lake View and Lake Access. It was explained to the buyers of the off-water townhomes that they would have a green belt to access the lake, but were never guaranteed views. Avalon Property Company had a large overall site plan for the 52-acre Avalon Master Plan community, as well as a rendering and site plan for the Avalon Townhomes that were on display for all to see. So it was never a secret that the townhome owners would not have a Lake View. You would only have Lake Access. The view they had enjoyed was a luxury they had not purchased. It was simply serendipity due to circumstances. Originally, the townhomes were planned to expand across the eight-acre tract that we are discussing today. Due to the change in the market and the Hill family's desire to stay on their family homestead, the expansion was terminated. In 2001, Avalon knew the demand for townhomes was not here in Granbury, so we started our development Catalina Bay and allowed time to drive the market. After 15 years, the Granbury market is ripe for another multifamily development. I would also like to add that the parking for Avalon Townhomes and for the Stonegate and for the reserve on Lake Granbury were to your code at the time. As the salesperson, one of the things that was continually touted to the buyers was your urban lifestyle that the townhome buyers would enjoy. They wanted to have access to walking, to shopping, dining, and entertainment. So it should come as no surprise that a multifamily would be a big part of driving that urban setting. As you can see, the reserve on Lake Granbury has created no big problem for the townhome buyers. I respectfully ask that you take the following information into consideration and approve the request for rezoning. As Mr. Murphy and Avalon Property Company are a proven and trusted developer in this community, our developments, the reserve on Lake Granbury, Avalon Townhomes, Avalon Town Center, Chili's, Walgreens, Avalon Medical One, Avalon Medical Two, and also our beautiful Catalina Bay, 152-acre canal development. We have dedicated over $4 million in infrastructure to the city of Granbury that should prove our commitment to this community to provide a quality product, something that all of the people in this city can be proud of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lee. Our next speaker, speaker is Robert Hill.
Thank you, Mayor, city manager, council. Before I begin my prepared remarks, I think I need to clear up a little bit of misinformation. My name is Robert Crawford Hill. Now, both of those names should probably mean something to the folks that live on Hill Boulevard or travel down Crawford Court or some of those streets. One of the speakers over here a few minutes ago, there was some misinformation there. She wanted to know who the applicant is. Well, you're looking at it. I represent, I represent my trust, which is one of the owners of this property. I am the managing partner of Crawford Partnership LP. If I get choked up, it's on because the Allegra is killing my allergies right now. Crawford Partnership LP and my brother's trust, Thomas Kelly Hill, who some of you may know, who is really not in very good health right now or would be here tonight. Crawford Partnership LP is comprised of four individual members. Crawford Partnership LP is comprised of four individual members. You'll understand why they're not here tonight. I'm one of them. My brother, Thomas Kelly Hill, whose health is not that great, is another. His daughter, Brittany Lynn Human, is probably at a Little League ballgame in Glen Rose tonight. And the final member of Crawford Partnership LP is my son, Cole Garner Hill, who unfortunately, much to the chagrin of his mother and I, happens to live in Brooklyn, New York. So if he could be here, he would. So that should clear up who the ownership is in all of this. So now I'd like to just give you my prepared remarks, if you'll indulge me. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak in favor of Don Murphy's request to rezone that eight-acre tract on Hill Boulevard from interim holding to planned development multiple family. One thing that I think is lost in all this discussion is our appreciation for what the city has done in keeping this one age. You really did this to benefit an 80-year-old man when you annexed his property into the city limits of Granbury. That 80-year-old man was my father, John Martin Hill. And you did it to really kind of help him out and not have to fuss and fight with a lot of things. He could maintain the lifestyle that he had. He could live on the property that he had. And it worked out very well. And I really kind of think you all kind of indulged him at that. And I appreciate that. And I know he did too. He lived there until his dying day, and, which was about three years ago. But thank you for that. But saying all that, I know this property well because it's been in my family for over 100 years. It's most recently, as I mentioned, as the home of my now-deceased parents, John Hill and Mary Jo Hill. A little bit of history here. We began our business relationship with Mr. Murphy about 20 years ago when we sold him the land to construct what was then known as the Avalon Apartments. I think they're called something else now, maybe the Reserve or something. They're built on the site of my mother's birthplace and the longtime home of my grandmother, Norma Crawford, who some of you may know, may have known, and my great-grandfather, Henry's wife. Our family has deep roots in Granbury and Hood County, and we've made many investments in infrastructure to benefits its citizens, as Scott will happily attest to. The Hill family dedicated the land for Hill Boulevard, Crawford Avenue, Mary Jo Road, and too many drainage and sewer projects to list. Does that sound about right, Scott? Since 2001, the total value of our family contributions to the city has exceeded over $2.4 million. We'll do more if you let us. Rezoning the eight-acre tract will provide construction work for local contractors, carpenters, framers, stonemasons, roofers, plumbers, electricians, landscapers, provide full-time employment for management maintenance personnel, and new modern living spaces for people to call home. It'll contribute more tax revenue to the city, county, library, and school district, certainly much more than it will if it's maintained as a single-family home. And then there's a new city park that we'd like to donate, which was left out of Scott's presentation. It will have as its centerpiece the oldest freestanding wooden structure in Hood County, the 148-year-old Ferry Masters Cabin. It's located right now at the front of this site. You can drive down the street and look at it. And with your approval, it'll be dedicated to the city by the Hill family, free and ready for citizens to enjoy. But enough about us. Mr. Murphy has invested in Granbury too. Through almost two decades, I've watched him help Granbury become a better place to live, work, and raise a family. If you've gotten a prescription filled at Walgreens, eaten a hamburger at Chili's, shopped at Avalon Town Center, had a doctor's appointment at one of his two medical centers, live in Catalina Bay, the Avalon Apartments, or even the Stonegate Townhomes, you can thank Mr. Murphy. He spent $396,000 out of his own pocket for street improvements, traffic signal, and the median at Walgreens. He's built water lines, sewer lines, and a five-foot storm drain connecting the Lowe's Development across Highway 377 to allow for future growth. He paid for all of this and many more projects and dedicated the improvements to the city. The Hill family is invested in Granbury. Mr. Murphy is invested in Granbury. A vote in favor of Mr. Murphy's rezoning request benefits the city and all that are lucky enough to call Granbury, Texas, home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Don Murphy.
Thank you. I'm Don Murphy, 717 Hill Boulevard. Enough about, just talking about me, an individual. Let's talk about the aspects of the rezoning for the property and talk about facts. What he's passing out to you is a... It's a set of minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission back in 2012. And then I have a copy for your review for each one of you if you'd like to see a follow-up for that same property being replanted in 2014. And the reason I'm bringing this to your attention is because it's almost a mirror sight to our property on Hill Boulevard also, and it's directly behind Lowe's. And your number four agenda item tonight abuts this site. And that number four agenda item was single-family. And this 12-acre multifamily site that was rezoned in 2012 was rezoned multifamily. I'm coming in with a PD trying to save trees and with only 16 units to the acre. And by the way, the townhomes are about 10 units to the acre. So we're not that far off. So, and I don't really want to get into trying to dispute some of this disinformation. But the only side setback that we had a problem on that two-foot that we were discussing, that's sitting next to the Avalon Medical Building. And there's 70 feet between there and the building. So it's all parking lot and driveway, and then parking lot again, parking spaces again. So that shouldn't be a problem per se. But back to this item that I sent you. And if you'd like it, I have for each one of you the 2014 copy of the PD and TCP plan that was approved in 2014. But the reason I gave you the first one because that's the rezoning. And that rezoning to multifamily had some variances. Then the staff approved it. There was some resistance from the adjoining property owners to the east. But as it stands, just to kind of put it all in a nutshell, that property, which is just two blocks from Highway 377, just as our site is two blocks from 377, that almost identical property has multifamily zoning. And on two sides of it, it has single-family. It backs up to single-family existing residential. And now, as of tonight, another new single-family residential. And then the third and fourth boundaries of it are Hill Boulevard and across the street would be Lowe's, which is commercial. And then across the street on the west side would be Catalina Bay and the island. So it has single-family effectively on three sides. And they had no problem getting it passed in 2012 and then replanted and reaffirmed in 2014. So that's a real good point to bring up. If you're going to allow something with single-family around it and not allow something with multifamily and commercial and commercial and lake on my four sides, it just seems a bit unfair. I just want to put that out. And then the second thing that I gave you was the list of all the other cities' parking requirements. And in North Texas, all the planning staff that I could reach was Fort Worth, Arlington, Weatherford, Benbrook, Stephenville, Burleson, and Cleveland. And if you start with Fort Worth, there are one parking space per bedroom. If you analyze our eight-acre site, 128 units, that requires 188 units. That puts Fort Worth 132 spaces under Granbury's 320 required spaces. So you can go all the way down the line and see that all of these other cities have nothing in common with Granbury's code. And it may be a good time just to review your code and see if you're not out of date with this particular code of 2.5 across the board. Some of the cities go by bedrooms. And the ones that go per unit, Benbrook, 1.75. Stephenville, Burleson, and Cleveland, 2.0. So, but if you took all those averages, if you see where Braz is crossing, we're 2.25 with the tandem. And by the way, if you look at the far column, each one of those cities accept tandem parking as a parking space. They realize that somebody poured concrete, they put a curb, and they outlined it as a parking space. Even though it may be behind a unit, we are specifying that those units be... We only have 24, and those are direct-access garages. Well, those will be two-bedroom units. And the space behind that will be the mate or roommate of the garage owner. So no one's going to be parking behind a garage that doesn't belong there, and we'll specify that. Unit 102A, you know, unit 103. Nobody can park there, be reserved just for that. Those 24 spaces will be reserved. So I think we really should get the credit for those tandem spaces. Other cities allow it, and we're doing more than they do. We're actually specifying a particular unit for a particular two-bedroom. And see, we only have 68 single bedrooms and 62 bedrooms. And this puts our... If we were in another city, we'd only have 188 to 220 parking spaces required. We're providing 288. Or if you take out the tandem, we're still providing 254. So that puts us 56 under the current code. But if you go all the way to the bottom and look at Granbury's code of 2.5, that's 320 units. That equals 112,000 square feet of concrete, which is 2.57 acres of concrete. And that is exactly 33% of the entire eight-acre site. So it's rather difficult to plan a site when you want to shove all this concrete. And I've added about 42 extra spaces since we started. We were at 1.92. And now we're up to 2.25 or 2.06 without the tandem. But I'm proposing even to add more with... Actually, the ones that we've added, I wanted to change to... Since they were under these trees, I wanted to change some of those to the grasscrete. But Scott stopped me on that because it would require coming back since it's a PD. But the point is, we're trying to bring a quality product. And the talk in the past of problems with apartments or having any difficulty with apartments, these will hopefully be converted and sold as condominiums subject to financing, the allowable financing, and subject to the market. And we're building them going in as condominiums. The quality of construction, we won't have any conversion cost just for sale sign. The quality of construction, that's why we have direct-access garages, which you don't see anywhere in this town. The quality of construction will allow us to sell those. And they'll be in the $200,000 to $220,000 range. And there's not that product available just abundantly in this market. You can buy a lot for that price, but you can't get right down on the water and be in a nice community for that kind of price. So we hope soon to be able to have those, the benefits to the city, over $300,000 as it is right now in annual taxes. When we sell these, hopefully, that will change to almost $600,000 in property taxes. So that's one benefit. Another major benefit that we haven't talked about, and I've been working in other cities. I've just finished three complexes in New Mexico. And they appreciate these complexes because it allows housing for employees. You can't attract employers into town unless you provide and have sustainable housing. This market right now, we just did a market study, and this market is 100%. And I'm sure Gary will tell you, he's maxed out. Everybody is full in town. So even when we convert, there'll be other people that will start other complexes after us. And there'll be more need for more multifamily rental housing. We hope to get out of that and take these off the market one day and have a for-sale product. But there's always going to be a need. You need multifamily housing. And it's nothing bad for these people to live in a nice multifamily unit. But you're going to be bringing in more tax dollars. You're going to provide housing for employees, and that will attract employers. So there are other attributes that we haven't talked about that should be considered when you're considering this proposal. And I certainly hope that somebody could have a workshop or something to look at these parking requirements because they're just really off the charts as far as what's necessary. If you look to the next to last section, I show you the amount of square footage of lost green space by the extra parking compared to these other cities. So like in Fort Worth, on our site, if that site was in Fort Worth, we would save 1.6 acres, 46,200 square feet of green space by not adhering to the Granbury code. So, and then the average, we average all those cities next to the last line, it's 30,800 square feet, seven-tenths of an acre. That's basically the parking lot that everyone's in right now. That's about 3/4 of an acre. So if you can imagine eliminating all that concrete and have that as green space, that's what I'd like to propose. I'm sure there may be some questions, and I'd like to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this item? You don't have to. If you would like to speak, Ms. Lanham, you step right on up there. Don't let it happen again, though. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but all this parking has got me concerned. Faylandum, I live at 707 North Avalon Court. At the P&amp;Z meeting, there's a volunteer fireman that serves on the P&amp;Z. And he talked about how horrible it is at the Reserve Apartments to get a fire truck, to get an ambulance in there. It's impossible. And he immediately voted against this. And I don't know what the restrictions were, the rules were when the Reserve was built. I do know it was one of Mr. Murphy's projects. But the fire department hates the Reserve just because of that and feels like it's danger. Carrie Bellamy, who used to live at the Reserve, asked me to speak for her. And I said, "Well, I don't want to use your name." She said, "Oh, use my name." She moved from the Reserve because of the parking situation. She said she could never find a place to park up by her apartment. When she brought in groceries or moved furniture or anything into her apartment, she was way, way far away from her apartment. So I really feel like the parking is an issue. And I want you to consider this, and we certainly would like for you to deny this. It's according to what P&amp;Z did. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lanham. If you would, fill out a card so she'll have it on file. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak, public speaking on this item? Well, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, I'm going to open that up to counsel when you have Scott there. But what I will, well, I'll go ahead and start with the council's remarks right now.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself on this matter.
Excuse your matter. For what reasons?
I have a project that I'm working on as well. And based on demand, there could be a financial gain depending on which way this goes. a financial gain, depending on which way this goes.
Okay. Yeah, you can go ahead. Remove yourself from. Counsel, is there any more discussion on this item?
I'd like to say a few words.
Councilman Mobley.
Mr. Murphy, hey, thank you for all the information. I probably have a question, you'll probably want to respond to this. It'd have been nice to have this, come on up, it'd have been real nice to have this prior to you coming to the podium.
I'm delighted.
Okay, so, here's my question. You gave us this on comparison parking codes.
Yes, sir.
And so, every now and then, we have this thing called the Internet that we can pull up and kind of verify some things.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm pulling up a document from the city of Fort Worth, so I was just going to go down the list and just kind of confirm some numbers, and I'm looking at the city of Fort Worth zoning ordinance, and it's dated 10/23/2015. And it says parking requirements. One parking space provided for each bedroom plus one additional space for each 250 square feet of indoor recreation area. Parking, the number of parking spaces shall not be less than 1 1/2 per dwelling unit and not exceeding 2 1/2 per dwelling unit.
Yeah, that goes to a three-bedroom. That's exactly right.
Okay, but it's saying per dwelling unit, 1 1/2, and you list one.
They gave me that over the phone as 1.0 parking spaces per bedroom.
But, again, if you read the entire paragraph, it states this. So I'm, I just, if that's the first item here, I mean, at that point, I stop and question, you know, where are we going to go when we follow up on the rest of this?
I spoke.
That's kind of my question.
Okay, well, I spoke to the city planners, and in Fort Worth, it took a long time to get through to one person, an associate, and that's what I was given over the phone. Now, in Benbrook, that's 1.75, and that's Mr. Ed Gallagher, he's a city planner. He said, and I'll tell you this, Don, we've had that 1.75 on the books since I've been here for the past 41 years. And then Burleson, Shad, who was here with your planning staff, was the one who gave me that information. He's over in Burleson.
So in Benbrook, if they have a three-bedroom unit, they're going to be, they're okay with 1.75?
It's across the board. I don't agree with that.
Well, it's not across the board, because in Fort Worth, that's not the case.
Well, that's what he told me.
Okay. So, well, like I said, it would be nice to have some of these confirmed so that we're not scratching our heads, because at that point, not only do I quit, I quit looking here and trying to verify, because there's no point, but also, as you keep talking, I'm going through my head and saying, what else are we not hearing here?
Well, I can tell you this, I didn't get it in time, but my architect has projects all over South Texas, and he's based in Houston. He has Austin, San Antonio, Houston, smaller towns around Houston, and he's told me all of those are under this requirement here. And we can pull those up with an email right now if you'd like to hear those.
All right. I think you've answered my question. Thank you.
Could I ask, Don, a question?
Councilman Allen, yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Murphy, this is a hard spot that I'm in, in part of the whole council. I can understand these people, I can understand you. We need, we need a park.
Yes, we do.
We really do. Just like Councilman Couch, you know, he's looking to build some. He's going to run into the same problem you've got with a comprehensive plan we got, where he's at. What could you do, and I'm not saying our parking is right or wrong, what we're asking for. I know it's been away for a long time, and that's something that the staff can look at a later date. But to get this moving, would you lower the apartments count to come into our parking that we got? What would you have to do to do that?
Well, to do that, you know, the buildings are in place, and to do that, we'd lose trees. And let me go back to something that was said earlier in regards to the tree survey, I mean, the tree transplanting. So you can, so you'll know, I'm not trying to avoid any expense, because the 22 trees that are designated to be moved equal 400 caliper inches, and that's exactly $50,000. Instead, I've employed an arborist from Fort Worth, and they brought up a company from Austin to transplant, to give me a bid on transplanting these trees, and it takes two huge cranes and track hose, it's crazy, and strapping, and the bid that I received, my first bid, hopefully I'm going to find some better bids, $188,000 to move those trees. And they take, I mean, it's half the size of this room when they move it on huge trucks, just even a few feet. We're not moving ours very far. But, we have, I mean, I'm actually putting grasscrete under trees, we're getting so close to trees now, I don't, that's why I'm using grasscrete. We would have to lose, we would have to lose trees to accommodate. But why can't I turn that question around to you and say, why should I cover 1/3 of the parking, of the entire site, 33% in concrete? This town is more about open space and green space than that. And let's go back to the reserve on Lake Granbury, the problem they have there. That's a long, narrow site that was laid out without enough parking, and it's proven to be, that's exactly right now, that it does not have enough parking. That was the shape of the site. We've got a big, fat rectangle that's easy, almost a square, that's easy to manipulate a drive-through there, and we've got one ingress and one, and another egress. They have one ingress/egress point. We wrap around the whole site, and we layer parking all around that. And then we have garages, then we have direct access into the building. We will not have that problem that was addressed earlier. So, why don't we look at hitting a compromise and not having to have so many parking spaces and have so much concrete that no other city in North Texas, and I can show you cities in South Texas, we haven't found one to match it, let's put it that way. Not one city can match this high code. So, can we hit a happy median here and try to work this out to where we don't have to lose trees to fit parking?
In other words, if you cut out a building, that would cost you money and actually cost you profit.
Well, I'm not worried about that. If I was worried about that, I'd have all those buildings three-story, and we'd go all the way to 18 units an acre. All those interior buildings are two-story for the sake of the townhomes. So I did that before I even met with them. I designed those two-story. The only, we've got two regular-sized buildings and two little tiny four-unit buildings that stack up three stories on the water. Those are the only three stories. The other six buildings are two stories. So, you know, we could shave down a building or eliminate a building and redesign the site plan and get less density just to accommodate your parking, or we could work together and try to, you know, relax that parking requirement. Nobody wants to put in 1/3 of the site in concrete. I mean...
All right. I feel your pain, and I appreciate you working with John and Em, this group, on that five feet.
Well, I did more than that. I agreed to a $76,000, six-foot stone wall, 400 feet long. I agreed to a four-foot walkway with a cinder. All that total is over $100,000 extra that I've agreed to. And we moved our building, our garages over to the other side, and then they bitch about that being two feet to the property line, so I can't do anything right, it seems like, with these people. But I'd like to see how anyone else would recommend working this out so we can figure out the parking. I know that's the biggest problem, but it's also almost insurmountable. Everyone else is going to have this problem, and it's going to be ugly. All these other new developments will just be flat ugly, because they'll have to take out all the trees and plant little new three-inch caliber trees. That doesn't, that doesn't help anything. I've got 150-year-old oak and pecan trees and red oaks, and beautiful, you know, and we're saving all of them, and we want to. So, you know, we could, you know, if we wanted to reduce a building and get closer to your code, if you guys would relax your parking requirements to kind of meet me halfway, I would do that, you know, whatever it takes to get along.
Counsel, I, you know, there's many items on here, several items on here, and I know we've talked a lot about the parking, and we're not that far off of the parking. And Don, I know you've built several things here in Granbury, Texas, so you're, and I appreciate the comparison, but you know, we're Granbury, and so we're going to have, ours is going to start at one point, and that's what we're, our comprehensive plan tells us this is what we need in our parking requirement, and so that's what we've been working with, that's what we've worked with in your stores, in your parking lots for your Avalon. You are aware of these a lot.
I met all those.
You've dealt with that a long time, other builders have, and yes, you're right, we have been able to work with people, and we will work with you, to try to make sure that, you know, you get as close as you can to our requirement. We're not going to sit up here and just change that just because we're building something out here, but we're, I'm sure, willing to work with anybody, not just you, to accommodate, especially when we're getting this close with it. And what was it, 2.2 versus 2.5, is that what, Don?
2.2.
Pretty close?
It's 2.2, depending on how you break it down with the tandem, and if you consider the tandem as the 24 in the tandem, 2.02, I think, is what.
2.06 without.
And everything you presented, the tree, when I first heard that, I said, you know, I've transplanted little trees before, and they die. But hopefully, these people can come out, and if you spend enough money on them, they can transplant those. That's a great idea.
Their root ball is the height of this room. It's unbelievable.
I understand. But a lot of those that you're doing, their root system goes out this way, too, and they don't capture all that. So, it's a risk.
It'll be a challenge, yes.
It's a risk, and hopefully you can save them. But there's a lot of other issues out here, counsel, that I think we're looking at also when you look at the five options here of what we're going to do in order to get Mr. Murphy where he needs to be and where we need to be as far as our code requirements and things like that.
Would you like me to work with the staff a little bit longer and try to get this worked out?
Well, we have several options here that we could vote on tonight. Mr. Park, do you want to speak, Harvey?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to speak. You handed out, Don, appreciate your presentation, appreciate your interest in working with us. What was the, I got the reading on the pecan reserve land company deal when you handed that out.
Yes, sir.
What was sort of the idea behind this, that as we've approved moving residential to multifamily previously, is that what that is?
No, I was comparing, I was comparing what I have on either side of me. I have a lake on one side, the back of a shopping center on one side, multifamily on the west side, and then commercial office buildings on the east side. And that 12-acre site, which has, by the way, just blanket multifamily, which is 18 units an acre, and I'm barely 16, they have, I'm at 8 acres, they're at 12 acres, so they'll always have 24 more units than I would ever have on that site. That's just strictly entirely a multifamily site bounded on two sides by single family. And they didn't require an eight-foot, a six-foot tall, $76,000 wall. They didn't require a four-foot walkway in case there was a fire. I mean, they didn't require any of that. They approved that just a few years ago, and then they lost their financing, and then they came back again to replat it in 2014. So I was comparing the council, the P&amp;Z and the council granting zoning bounded on two sides by single family compared to, we're not even close to single family where we're located. And it's on Hill Boulevard also, behind, it's almost identical to our site.
Okay. Are we still in the public hearing?
Yes.
Any more people?
Oh, yes, definitely.
I would like to ask our attorney to give us some input here about the choices that we're seeing on the screen from complete denial to whatever those choices were. And then also talk a little bit about what to override the P&amp;Z. The P&amp;Z is denying it without prejudice, as I recall, right? And so they'll be able to, Don, to be able to bring it back within short period of time without going through the expense and whatever, bringing it back. So for us to override that denial without prejudice, we've got to have a 4/3s or 3/4.
Well, at this point...
So since he's out of here, what we'd have to have is one nay vote.
Have four unanimous.
Have four to pass, okay. So, and then to do one of the other options, what would have to happen, was we'd have to deny the first one and then move to that one, or what?
Because of the P&amp;Z having voted against it, it puts us in kind of an odd situation. State law requires that because of this, because of their denial, we have to come up with a 3/4 vote to override what they do. Once you then go to the override, presuming you get the four votes, you can probably come up with different things. We have an odd situation here, which I've been listening, is that we seem to have things that keep getting added or proposed, whether the council wants to do that or to tell the P&amp;Z, "That's your job. Here are these proposals." You can also take it back to staff, let staff work on those proposals. Right now, you have to have a unanimous vote to say, "We don't want to do what the P&amp;Z did." After that, you can probably make some changes. It's even arguable that changing the question of whether or not without prejudice requires the four votes. So, right now, the question, the only question for us initially is whether or not we want to override the P&amp;Z vote. Now, there's several other things that come up because of this. This thing has a hot load of variances that are required to proceed with the way it's supposed to be done, at least in being proposed. Any variance has to have substantiation under the usual three or four items that you have to have to propose the variance. And because they denied it, we don't have substantiation for those variances. So if we are going to do that, we're going to have to find backup for each of the variances. Either tonight, or send it back to staff, or send it back to the P&amp;Z. So those will have to be, because they simply said no, so they didn't have to do that. So we still have to get that question answered if you're going to say okay to any of the variances. And we'll have to go through that process. Whether we're ready to do that or not, I don't know. That's up to you guys. And it'll require a unanimous vote just to get to that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilperson Meyer.
Down here at the end.
Oh, I see you.
Okay. Okay, so, hearing that, I think that every vote's going to be crucial, so I'd like to ask a few questions as well.
Sure.
Got several notes here. In regards to the safety of the residents, the ability to get fire personnel down there, emergency personnel, do we have anything in writing that says that if we build this complex down there, that the residents aren't at risk?
Well, we have the approval of the fire marshal here, Kevin Jones approved the layout. And Scott, if you wouldn't mind, could you pull up the site plan again for her benefit so you can see how the fire lane is looping around and through? It's just a U.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Where are you looking?
Yeah, we actually have it.
The very far right-hand side, see the entry coming in at an angle?
Correct.
And then see how it turns and goes across parallel with the lake, and then turns and comes down and out another gate? That, fire departments really ask for you to design something in a loop system, and that's exactly what that is. And we're looping the water for safety also, to be sure there's never interruption of a water flow. But we've got 18-foot parking spaces, then a 24-foot fire lane, so we've got plenty of room to get in and around, and all the turning radiuses had to be approved. There are only two, but they had to be approved by Kevin, so to answer your question, yes, ma'am, we've had a fire official, your fire chief approve it.
Okay, thank you. Second question, and I'm sorry, I wanted to begin my questioning by thanking Mr. Hill for his comments in regards to their investment in Granbury, and so I really appreciate you sharing your history with us. Okay, the trees.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been down there, and I've looked at these trees.
And you what?
I, I, I've looked at the site, walked on the site, and, and I, like the mayor, I, I can't even get a bush transplant to live. And I, I've got a pretty green thumb, so I look at those trees and I think, my goodness, how, how is that going to be done? Because, one, I mean, I have, they're live oaks, right? Or are they, most of them?
Yes, most of the ones we're removing are live oaks and not trying to move any pecans. That's, that's almost impossible, as deep as their taproot is. But the red oaks, red oaks and live oaks are the ones we're trying to move. 16, 18 inches, I mean, they're not small, but it's not insurmountable. And there are companies that do that, and that's why they, but they're going to charge me a lot of money. But they feel like they can bring them to, I mean, it's just going to hurt me if they don't live. I've got to turn around and, and pay a ransom, that's the way I look at it. I'll pay a fee for it if, if they don't, if they don't live. So I'm gambling, because they're so beautiful, I'm gambling that, that they'll live. And I'm trying to keep them alive. It's really easy just to shove them over with a bulldozer. Who wants to do that? I've never been that way.
Yeah.
So.
You know, I, we built a pool in our backyard when we bought back in 2005. And just building a pool, we had three live oaks in our backyard and only one lived. And we didn't move any trees. We just dug a pool and it killed them. So I just, oh, that just gives me angst.
It's going to be a, a challenge and, and I, you know, but I'd like to try it.
I want to echo what the mayor said. The one thing I've learned since I've been up here at the dais is that when we compare ourselves to other cities, regardless of what the data shows, we're Granbury. And I'm learning that I can't compare Granbury to Weatherford or Fort Worth or Benbrook, just because their infrastructure is so different. And I'm, I'm familiar with that, you know, that drive down there to Avalon. And I'm thinking about you building this unit, which is desperately needed in Granbury. I know that even when we had the floods recently, no one had anywhere to go because there's nowhere to live.
Thank you.
But just the traffic, you know, coming in and out of there and the, the necessary parking needed because of our aging population. It's, it's really difficult to, to haul a bag of groceries, you know, a block to your home.
Right.
I can, I, I know that you need that additional space and don't want to put concrete down there, but people need a way to get in and out.
Yeah, I, I provided 288 parking spaces and other, other cities don't even get close to that. So we're going, you know, we're adding more than what, what we would normally do in another city. And, and the two medical buildings that I developed, the code, I believe, was 1 to 200, and I put in 1 to 150, one parking space to 150 square feet of building. So when it's necessary, I want to go overboard. And in medical practices, it's, it's more than necessary. People are waiting and they're always, they're running out of parking spaces. So, but if you check our, either one of our parking lots at Avalon Medical, we always have parking spaces available because we have more than we need. And so that was a case where we put in more than was required. But we're not that far off. I mean, when you look at 68 singles, single, I mean, one bedrooms, how many of those people are going to have two and a half cars?
Well, probably not many, but, I mean, I'm just asking you to keep in consideration that perhaps if you scaled it down where it's not so tall, that you wouldn't need that much parking, you could probably sell them for more money once you started selling them. And then just, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud. Your presentation tonight was much, much softer.
Well, they didn't have me all riled up.
Well, you did say they were bitchin', so you're getting better. So I appreciate you being a little more respectful to the residents. With that being said, not, over 90% of them are not in favor of this. And I think if you could perhaps come to an agreement of something that we can all live with, I, you know, I think that that would be, I know it's a little late and we got to vote, I'm just worried about that.
I've been trying. I mean, I've, I've offered these, these properties, I needed property back.
I understand that, but it, we, it was rough getting here, so we're getting there.
Yeah, yeah. And, and so if we're talking about having to reduce the number of units and still keep the sea of parking, you know, to meet code, I'll reduce the number of units.
Would that, would that then reduce the height?
I could take out, I could take out one of the buildings totally, and that would, that would only leave three buildings that would have any, any height. And the main height that they're talking about is a, are a couple of towers that you see on the larger buildings. Only the three story, only the three story buildings have the towers. All the, and they're the only ones that look like that. But I could take out one of those buildings and take away, you know, enough units to make, to make this work. And it's, it's just detrimental. But it'll bring us down to, my gosh, probably, well, I see, it'll bring us down to probably 14, 13 and a half to 14 units an acre. And they're at 10 at the townhomes. So I'm not very far off if I do that. And I'll work with the staff to do that.
What do, what do we?
Okay, one last, I'm not done yet. Thank you, councilperson Allen. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I've just got one last thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want to lose my train of thought here. Okay, Mr. Murphy, finally, I was absent the last council meeting and there was a comment made that the council has been, has been not listening to the members that serve on these boards. Did you work real closely with the P and Z board to, to see if you could come to an agreement before it came to council? Because again, you know, we don't want to appear to not listen to those that serve on our boards. And where do you feel like you can help us make a good decision and be, you know, we've got to listen to the citizens that, that vote for us, but we also want to be good partners with those that want to invest in our community.
All right.
I think we're getting close. I'm just, I'm just asking, how can we make this work?
Okay, well, you were talking about the P and Z. I'd like for you to know that I had a two week notice to provide a traffic study. And it normally takes, according to the traffic engineering companies, it normally takes four to six weeks to perform a traffic study. And instead of paying five or $6,000 for a traffic study, this cost us $15,600. And it came back positive, as we thought it would, but we performed, we had the traffic study by Parsons Engineering, a huge national firm, completed in 12 days. And that was all to get in front of the P and Z on time. And we learned about it two weeks before P and Z. So that shows, I mean, I've been trying. That was a last minute attempt and, and we got it through, but that was close. But I don't, I haven't lobbied or talked to any of the P and Z people before the hearings. And so I didn't know what their feelings were. They were, they were torn over the, the parking. And one, one person even said, well, if we just refer it to the council, they can decide. So it was almost like it was punted down the road.
[laughing]
So that's why the denial without prejudice, but they kind of got stuck, you know, anyway.
I'm in favor of less, I'm in favor of less distance between parking and residence. And I'm, I'm even in more favor of assigned parking so they are sure to get a spot. Especially because I look out there and I see residents that don't need to be hauling groceries or purchases, you know, a long distance, nor do they do their guests. So I guess I'm going to go ahead and, and those are my concerns. Wrote them all down. I'm going to punt down this end and see if anything else comes up, and then I'm going to ask the attorney. I mean, I think we're close, but I don't know that, do we have to vote yes or no?
Well, we're going to, I'm, I'm going to.
Okay, thank you.
Right in the public hearing right now, so the council and have, have the ability to discuss this with the public out there right now, and then we'll, we'll turn it over to Walt.
And I don't mind if you delay it until we get these things worked out. I don't mind coming back as long as we get it right and I can work with the staff. I don't mind coming back.
Okay. Counsel, is there any more questions for?
Well, I was going to ask Walt. What Mr. Murphy said, we tabled this for the next meeting.
Okay, let me have, I'm going to, I'm going to let Walt kind of go through these scenarios here.
We'll need to back out of public hearing and then we go back to.
Yep. So is there any more questions to Mr. Murphy or anybody else that's spoken out there at the public hearing there? Does anybody else wish to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, you, you've heard the, the public speak, you've heard the staff speak on this issue. At this time, I'm going to let, and Walt has speak, spoken a little bit on our five options here, and I think they've changed a little bit. But Walt, if you would please, just kind of go over those a little bit and explain to the council what our options are on this item here. And I think it will capture the, the parking problem and any other problems, free problems, any of those problems, we'll be able to work with on, on some of these options here. So if you would, please.
Surely. The staff.
Earn your pay.
All righty. The staff items are a fairly, a fairly good explanation of what we can do. Let me just go over, refresh everybody where we are procedurally. The P and Z, by voting no, put a burden on us to go any further. We have, under the rules, we have to have two thirds vote of all existing or elected members. So that works out as four. Anything, anything under that means that their recommendation stands. And so if we, you can vote to approve it, such as it is, i.e. the denial, you can vote to undo it. Actually, if you don't make any motion at all, it's kind of like a Supreme Court thing, high vote means it stays where it was. So it doesn't go in, i.e., this is turned down, with their recommendation stands. So it goes back and it is denied without prejudice, as opposed to our six month rule, which is, which happens if it is denied with prejudice. You can also send it back to, if, if that is agreeable with the proponent, send it back to staff for review and discussion or whatever. If we want to change anything, and you want to send it back to the P and Z, I suppose you can, but they've already voted until they change their minds. That is what's there. And we keep having all kinds of differing things apparently being thrown at us, which is not really appropriate at this point. It would have to be turned down and sent back to the P and Z or whatever. So our hands are somewhat tied procedurally by what the P and Z did. So right now, I suppose the real question, I guess, to find out whether, where we're going, would be to see, are we unanimous, one way or the other? You could just ask and see if that's a quick vote on that. If the vote is to turn, uphold the P and Z, then it goes back to, goes back to restart. And you go to the staff, you go to the neighbors perhaps, and try to work out whatever there is that needs to be worked out. Nothing prevents a thorough examination and review of all these things that have been brought up. In fact, that's kind of a pretty good guideline of what everybody's concerned about. So that probably helps a little. And certainly it can come back under normal rules and procedures. But we really can't undo or revise all this unless we decide what we're going to do about the P and Z recommendations.
So Walt, my question on, for instance, number three, the table for additional information or requested modifications. If the council would decide to go with that one, then they could ask for a table and, with a date, and the applicant could come back with, and I've heard a lot of talk about the parking and the trees and things like that, is?
That's a modification of what the P and Z did.
Right.
It would require all four votes.
So it would still require all four, but you could still do that and give a, give a date of, say, next month or whatever. Because I hear the applicant is willing to talk about it some more and put it on hold some more. So i- is that kind of an?
That is a possibility.
Possibility, okay.
You could, without making a vote on whether what you want to do about the P and Z, you could table it for discussion with staff, not the P and Z, with staff.
And that's what I'm.
And that could come back, and that's a different thing.
Right.
But that would require, again, four votes to do that. Anything other than deny without prejudice is going to be four votes.
Okay.
And if that, if you don't get the four votes, then that stands.
But what I'm saying, you know, so if number five would have to go back to P and Z, number three would not. We still have the four votes.
If you have the four votes, you can do a lot of things.
Right.
If you do not have the four votes, then we're stuck with what the P and Z did. And it means however, that because they said no, with no, without prejudice, he simply starts over, if that is his wish.
But I'm assuming four votes, and if, if the council would choose number three versus the five, the difference in those two is that five would have to go back to the P and Z, three would not, you could take that just to the staff? If you tabled it for a later date, you could come back and say, table it from a later date and then they come back?
We're not voting on what the P and Z did.
Right.
That still stands.
Okay, okay.
But you could send it back for staff work in any case.
Okay.
Mr. Coffey? Walt, just to clarify things, a table to send us back to, for later information or more information?
Modifications, sir.
Request a modification. When those modifications are made, do they need to go back to the P and Z?
Yes.
Okay.
They do go back to the P and Z?
Yes. I just wanted to clear that up.
Yeah, thank you.
If, if they're not modified, then we bring it back here and vote again, and it would take a super majority vote.
Exactly. Same, same vote.
So there you have it, counsel. Is there any, is there any questions to Walt or any questions on the five options that we have here?
I'm a little confused, Mayor.
Councilman.
You said that, one of those deals, you said you did not have to go back to P and Z.
No, I, I said that, but that's not true.
We'll ultimately have to go through the P and Z if there are any modifications to this. Or unless, unless you want to simply say hurrah for what the P and Z did and then it stands. And then he goes back, it's denied with, without prejudice, and you just start over.
And it goes back to P and Z again?
Yes. Well, presuming he wants to keep going.
Exactly. Are we in voting tonight?
Any more questions for Walt, counsel? Any more discussion on this item? Want to ask the million dollar question, do we have a motion then on this item?
I wouldn't know how to make it.
You're looking at, you're looking at five of them right here.
Mayor, I would, what's, what's best for these people?
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, I, I, I got a motion from one of my councilpersons, Councilman Mobley.
In reference to ordinance 16 days 31 regarding a request of Don Murphy to rezone an approximate eight acre tract of the Marcus Smith survey, abstract number 504, from interim holding to planned development multifamily. The property is located at Hill Boulevard north of East Highway 377. I move that we confirm the P and Z recommendation by denying the request without prejudice.
Okay, we have a motion to deny without prejudice, which is confirming the P and Z motion.
Does that put it back to, back to the P and Z?
Okay, let's see if we get a second out of the first hearing. So I have a second. Okay, that fails for lack of a second. Mr. Allen, what was your discussion?
Oh, I don't know. I'm trying to figure out how to put this back to, to the staff and, and bring it back to us. Leave it like it is with the P and Z, and then we're just going to vote over it? Kind of like we're doing tonight.
Kind of what I just did.
Right. If you went with.
But, but I think Walt said, oh, if we did it that way.
If we, if we don't do anything. If we don't do anything, it takes four votes to override. So if nobody overrides, it stands.
Well, the P and Z vote is, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the motion that Councilman Mobley had made was basically the same one that the P and Z had made, but...
He was, it would be denying everything.
His motion would be to confirm what the P and Z recommended, which is deny without prejudice. Simply says, go back and start over.
Come back at a later date with everything, go back to the P and Z, back to us.
And stand.
Instead.
Can I just clarify? So really, let me just clarify, Walt. So regardless if we choose number three to table for additional information or request modification, or five to go along with the P and Z, Mr. Hill is still going to have to work with changes that go back to the P and Z. So regardless if we second that motion, they're still going to have to work with staff and work with P and Z and come back to us, correct?
The other, yeah.
So I second that motion.
You made a motion on three.
But, okay, let me, Walt, let me clear. In the table portion of it, if you was to table it and do nothing, make no changes, just table it, go home and think about it, come back at a described date, and basically continue where we left off, there would be no need for it to go to the P and Z or anything, because we're not making any changes, we're not asking for any changes, we're saying, we want to table this, and...
Ultimately, the P and Z, we'll have to deal with the P and Z's actions.
Okay.
Which would require four votes to undo what they did.
Mr. Mayor?
So even if staff went in and came back with a, you know, different proposal.
Right.
It would almost have to come back to us. We say, probably the simplest thing would be to deny it, send that kind of approved version back to P and Z and have them work on it.
And that's what happens with number five anyway.
Yeah.
So I guess we're trying to find out what the definition of number three was, and it's basically the same thing. Go ahead, Mr. Coffey.
I do have a question. Maybe Scott can help me. If they uphold the P and Z's request and deny without prejudice, is it required to go through the whole process again where he, the developer, would have to pay the thousands of dollars to refile the flat?
It's a $300 rezoning fee.
Okay.
So the issue's there is they deny without prejudice, he could come back the following month, garner the information that was discussed here tonight, roll those changes that he wants to propose back to P and Z and City Council. We pay a $300 rezoning request fee. And the other good thing is we send notices to the joint property owners and publish it so they, all the joint property owners, would get due notice as required by state statute. If we table it...
You could technically waive the $300.
I was gonna say, couldn't we waive it?
Under the circumstances, although you might get criticized.
Fixes.
Not by Don.
We just ran, we just, we just made him pay $15,000 for a traffic study in two weeks' notice. I think we could perhaps waive that. I'm just, I'm just talking out loud again, but maybe I should talk in my head.
So part of...
I think part of number three is, is not gonna work anyway, because we're asking for modification or changes. So we can't even go for number three, because we need to make some changes to make this work, so...
And as we're discussing this, when we look at these types of zoning cases where we say table for additional information or request modification, from staff's perspective, we always like to get clear guidance on what that requested modification is, so we can report back to P and Z.
Right now, all we have is a kaleidoscope of possible changes.
Absolutely.
There is no...
Yeah, so we're back to ground zero, where if we go with number three or number five, and we come back to P and Z, we're gonna look at the developer and say, it's your PD, it's your zoning ordinance to build as, as you want to propose your development. Unless we get clear guidance from City Council to say, here's what we're expecting on, on the trees, for example. We like the mature trees. We want you to put as much grasscrete around there as possible to preserve the mature trees. But it needs to be pretty well delineated for us to actually roll that kind of site design element into the site plan. The other side note that I want to mention is, if we do go with the deny without prejudice and we charge that $300 fee, in essence, that's cost recovery for us, because we have to send mailouts and publish it in newspapers. We have to do that again. That's, that's great that we contact the affected property owners directly, but it's a pass-through cost for us.
If you do that, if he comes back and re-applys, then that's, what, about a three-month process or two months?
It's a, once we get a complete application, then it's about two, two-and-a-half months to roll from the staff review. And of course, this is, you know, this is a pretty robust application. It's been, we've been chewing on it a while.
Mm-hmm.
But it's about two, two-and-a-half months to get it through P and Z, from the publication to P and Z through City Council.
It would also allow a more detailed input of information about who the owners are, which is in fact a flaw as it stands in the application.
Well, and I'm gonna go back to the signed application where, and this is what we defer to, the applicant is Don Murphy, and the property owner has given the authority to act on his behalf, the property owner, Mr. Robert Hill, has given the authority to Mr. Don Murphy to act on his behalf. So this is typically the application we see.
Yeah.
The developer come in, the property owner has to sign it. Nobody can actually request a rezoning request without the property owner's consent, but they can actually defer to an option holder or a developer to speak on the behalf of the application, because they may be more knowledgeable about it.
Go ahead.
Another, another thought to consider is, if you take item three as your action, it allows staff to work with the developer and to hash out changes that he may want to present. And at some point, you could also provide that information direction tonight or at a later meeting to further instruct the developer what you would like to see changed with his submission. But it would also allow him the opportunity to be sensitive to what he heard tonight, change his plans, and bring that back to the P and Z at a later date, which would be a quicker timeline than what we're dealing with by flat denial. But again, it takes a unanimous vote here to do anything other than accept the denial.
Number five. The what, the motion that's on the floor?
Well, it was on, but it's been, it never got a second yet, so we'll have to have a new, we'll have to have another motion.
Okay, so if that motion was made and seconded, that would not require a majority or a supermajority?
Not number five. You're talking about number five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If the motion that Mr. Mobley made earlier, if it was made, it would not require supermajority.
You're correct.
No.
Huh?
No, since it's basically ratifying what they did.
Ratifying what?
If it, in fact, it was brought to a vote, and there is no group of four, then the deny with prejudice stands, without prejudice stands.
So you're saying, okay, Chris, three is a one. We can come back and work with that.
It's safe.
Unless, unless he makes changes, then once those modifications are identified to staff, then they would be submitted to the P and Z for consideration.
That's right.
Yes. But there's no additional notice that's required, so there's no, you just table it and set a date today to talk about it again, basically. You're extending the conversation and keeping, keeping from killing the project and hoping that he goes back and gets some creative ideas and presents to staff, hey, you know what, I think I will take it back to the P and Z at the next meeting.
I call a question, Mayor.
Yeah, you actually could move it forward. I have a call to questions, or do I have a motion?
Make it.
I'll have a second to call a question. Who's second then? Well, you called a question, somebody else doesn't.
So do we have a motion on the floor or not?
No.
No, you don't have a motion.
Not yet, not yet.
Can't call a question.
Oh, you pulled Tony's motion?
Yes.
Well, effectively, you pulled that. I'm very sorry, Mayor, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion now. I'm ready for a new motion.
Okay, I recommend that, or recommend, make a motion that we go to item number three. Table it for additional information or request modification.
And along with that motion, you're gonna have to give me a date.
Y'all know when P and Z meets you, Chris.
Well, why don't you stretch it out there to where, a month and a half?
Next P and Z meeting is, deadline's already passed, probably for submission for this month, so the third Monday of August, is that correct, Scott?
That's how, that, because we did miss the July, the publishing and the Hood County News already been done. So it would be the...
August 6th, I mean, September 6th.
It would be the August 6th.
Yeah, our meeting would be, bring it back to council on September 6th.
16th or August 2nd. So, well, when's the P and Z meeting in August?
This will be with the staff, not P and Z.
Table for what?
This will be tabled to deal with staff.
We don't need to set a date on the agenda when we table something?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're trying to do.
The P and Z will not be part of this.
Not yet, not yet.
But would, if we table it, it won't go back to P and Z?
Unless there's modifications.
That's what we're trying to do. Set a date where if they...
Yeah, it's gonna be modified, I mean...
Continue to...
We're trying to, we're trying to help the man fast-track his project with changes, because if he makes changes, it's gonna go to P and Z in August, and we need to know that date, and Scott is looking it up now. Third Monday? He's got an annual calendar over there. He's gotta look it up on.
That would be August 15th.
August the 15th, it would go to P and Z, right?
And that, that P and Z rotation would go to the City Council September 6th.
September what?
6th.
Okay. There you have it. Mr. Allen, the preferred date would be September the 6th or later. The September 6th on your date, where you're gonna make the motion, September 6th at this location.
Go move.
So I have a motion to table for additional information or requested modifications and bring it back to at a later date of September the 16th, here at City Council. Okay, I had a motion. Sorry.
Mayor, will it, will it be...
I have a second, excuse me, Ms. Allen. I've got a second by Councilman Parsons. Have a, we have a motion and a second for the table for tabling of this item.
Mayor, back to...
Now, is there any discussion?
Does this require supermajority?
This does.
That would be September 6th, Mayor.
September 6th, I'm sorry, September 6th.
Yep.
All right, yeah, so. Okay, we have the motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? And remember, it has to be a supermajority, which would be four votes. Scott?
Do you have a comment?
Yes, I was gonna add in the correction on September 6th date. I'm sorry, I heard the 16th as well.
Yep, I just say, oh, you're right. We changed to September 6th.
So any modification would go to P and Z, August 15th, and then a council date of September 6th, if it goes to P and Z or no modification.
Right.
I'm sorry, but...
If you can't go back to the P and Z until we act, right?
Okay. But, but we're holding that range in case it does.
Yeah, we, we...
We're just setting the date.
It can go back to staff. Staff can consider and talk about these things. Proposals can be made. We could possibly clarify a lot of the things and have a more clear version of what's gonna be done. But then, it'll have to come back to us to act on the P and Z's thing. They're still, they're frozen. They voted. So we will have to say no, or uphold them, and then it goes back to them. So the table can help us clarify things. We could, if it comes back to us, we could say, hey, that's a great idea. And then, but you, basically, because of the idiot way the rules are in, you have to say over and send it back to them, so they can act. Because they're, they're frozen.
But our date we're looking at for is just for us, for it to come back to us.
Do you not want to move that up?
Yeah, I should fix the same, Mayor.
Which could be at a different date, right?
Yeah, I don't know how much time it'll take Mr. Murphy to do this, but we can move that date up till...
August 15th?
Yeah, we can either go August the 2nd or 16th, 2nd.
You could add that to your motion, change the date?
Yes, sir.
August 2nd?
August 2nd.
Okay, the motion has been, the date has been changed to August 2nd. Does the second have that? You got the second? You okay with that?
Now then, now then, we're, we're back to really being, pushing him out much further.
Two months?
Yeah, because now then you gotta bring it back, and then we decide we're gonna, what we're gonna do with the planning zone, and then it goes back, and then, and then we're another two months out. So I'm not gonna second that now.
Possibly.
If you deny, there's nothing to prevent him from going immediately and talking to staff. Deny with prejudice. Nothing prevents him going back immediately to staff and starting the process right, right away. Then the P and Z can kick into gear as quickly as they can.
If...
Maybe quick.
I'd like to make a motion.
So we had a, so we had a motion.
(laughing)
So we had, so we had a motion with a date, and we changed the date, and now we don't have a second. Is there a second on the, on the change date one? If not, it fails for lack of a second.
We still have a motion on the original September date.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we could, we could change that, okay.
We see amendments, guys.
Okay.
The original stat motion.
So we amend the first motion?
Yeah.
Add a second.
So now, we are back to looking for a motion.
You had to act on that motion for, Councilman Allen made a motion to bring back in September 16, that was seconded by Parsons.
Right.
That motion, yeah.
Okay, but did we change the date?
Hang on, Mr. Allen. So after the discussion, it was determined that that wasn't a good, it probably wasn't a good date. So we can go ahead and act on that, and council can deny that one. Okay? So, we have that motion for the 16th, had, had discussion, all in favor of that, say aye. All opposed, and aye?
Aye.
Everybody? Okay, so that one does not pass. Now, I'm looking for a new motion.
Mr. Mobley making a motion?
Have we had a motion, Dave?
I was going to make a motion.
Or you wanna make it? Yeah, go ahead.
Councilperson Meyer?
I hope I get this right.
I hope you do, too.
It's, it's three words.
Just three words? I don't have to go through this whole number twelve?
Oh, I don't know what one you're gonna use.
I'm going to make a motion regarding the ordinance, adopting ordinance 16 dash 31 regarding a request from Don Murphy to rezone an approximate eight-acre tract of the Marcus Smith survey, abstract number 504, from interim holding to planned development, multiple family, PD MF. The property is located on Hill Boulevard north of East Highway 377, and I would like to agree with the P and Z and deny the request without prejudice. Option number five.
Thank you.
I will second that.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Now, counsel, is there any more discussion on this item? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Meyer?
Aye.
It will be denied without prejudice, prejudice by the council. Thank you, counsel. At this time, we will go into the executive session pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. The City Council may convene into the executive session to deliberate regarding the following matters. And counsel, I will note that I've pulled two of those off. We will be deliberating on Section 5... We will be deliberating on section five-five-one, oh-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property. We will turn. The council will now reconvene into open session. There was no action taken in the executive session. Counsel, is there any more discussion on any items you'd like to talk about? If not, we'll adjourn the council meeting.